Okay, I'll call the meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Hold Order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Jacobson. Mr. Madigan.
Here.
Ms. Marlin.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Smythe. Mayor Pressing.
Here.
Additions to the agenda and staff report, I do have a change in the agenda request. If item number thirteen could be moved to nine and a half, between nine and ten, because thirteen is approval of our fire department grant agreement, and item ten is a budget ordinance that concerns, that includes that agreement as part of other things.
So moved. Second.
All in favor of the approved agenda? So I?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then staff report. Did you want to go with the brick discussion first, or are there other staff reports? Okay, Finance Department.
Right, so you know it's gotta be exciting, right? Just a couple of quick updates on some things that we're working on. We're working on a couple of things related to cash management, which will involve simplifying the relationships between our bank accounts at our primary bank, and eliminating a number of those accounts. That will reduce staff work, and it will also maximize the amount of time our cash that's on our money market account where it earns interest. And although we're not earning a very high rate of interest right now, it's still worth doing. So, also, at the same time, we will be implementing consolidated cash accounts, which is a change in how we account for our cash and investments. This should improve our ability to manage our cash and investments, and to get a better handle on both of those things. The auditors have arrived to begin their work again. I know it seems like they were just here. But we are beginning on work related to our audit for the fiscal year that ended on June 30th. They are here all week this week. They will return in October to complete their fieldwork. And again, our goal this year is to complete this by the end of the calendar year, which will be the first time in three years, I think, so. Sorry, go ahead, Charlie. I've got a couple more things. Also, finance and IT staff have begun meeting to define requirements for our new financial or accounting system. That process will take probably at least a few months, because the better job we do of defining our requirements, the more likely we are to get a result with a system that really works for us. And then, in terms of financial reporting, which has come up recently, particularly when we discussed the audit, I do plan to, in August, begin distributing monthly reports of cash disbursements for the month prior. So in August, you'll get a report for July. That will include a detailed listing of all our checks issued by the city. It will include a summary of our payroll information, and also detail on any investments purchased. So that's a first step. Then ultimately, we need to continue to work on some kind of regular, more detailed financial statements for you. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Charlie.
Thank you. Elizabeth, thank you very much for the progress report. Good luck with it all. But we used to, once upon a time, get quarterly reports on those investments and such. Is that one of the things that'll be included in that report, something like that? Just to let us know where things are at.
Initially, the report you will get will be on all of our cash disbursements, but we're continuing to work on a more detailed quarterly report with balance sheets and all that detail. I think that's what you're referring to, yeah. So we're working on that still.
Any other questions for Elizabeth? Okay, thank you. Libby Tyler.
I have an announcement to make, that I heard today from Central Illinois Business Magazine, that our very own Brandon Boyes has been selected as the latest crop of forty, under forty, awardees. And this is for his achievements, innovation, leadership ability, expertise in his field and community involvement. So, I know we all thought he was well over forty, but I'd like to congratulate Brandon on this achievement.
Thank you. Are there any other staff reports before our paver discussion? So, we started a paver discussion last week, and Bill sent out a memo this week. Did you want to add to that? Did you have additional information to add, or did you want to go over that?
I have no additional information to add. I wasn't sure if you wanted public input first, or if you want me to recap the memo. It's your pleasure.
Yeah, recap the memo probably, and then we'll have public input in the discussion.
First of all, in the memo, I wanted council to be aware of, just generally, how do we dispose of city property? And I included the ordinance that gives that authority to the various department heads. And, you know, whether it be, you know, vehicles, or old office equipment, or what have you, we have for years worked with the finance director, the mayor, or CAO, in a process for doing that, and trying to get the best price, if you will, for whatever the item might be disposed of. In fact, years ago, there was even auctions of city surplus or old equipment. Those don't happen anymore, since online is a much easier, simpler way, and better pricing than the old days of compiling things and having an auction. So, this is city property, the brick pavers on Broadway Avenue, and I just wanted council to be familiar with how we dispose of city property. So, recently, this misunderstanding with PACA and city staff has come about with respect to the brick pavers on Broadway Avenue. Last Monday night, we heard from Mr. Swisher as to PACA's understanding as to the brick pavers going entirely to PACA for their use. When we had our approval from city council back in February, staff sought to seek approval for converting Broadway Avenue between Stevens and Oakland from a brick paver street to a concrete street. And we had those discussions at a committee meeting, and subsequently at a council meeting. And during those discussions, and after, there was council members that had asked if there would be a way that we could make the brick pavers more available to the public. So we took that feedback back to staff, and then thought about what, in ensuing weeks ahead, what would be that method to do such a thing. Meanwhile, we knew that with the three and a half miles of brick streets in the city, that we need to have a good supply of bricks for those future repairs. And when we do brick repairs in streets, there is some loss of those bricks existing, whether the existing bricks are cracked, or chipped, or in some sort of disrepair, or just the process of removal. There can be a loss of those existing bricks, so we need to have a supply on hand. We do have an existing supply on hand at the Perkins Road Site, but we felt, in this removal of Broadway Avenue, that we should have an additional supply, just so that we have the appropriate number for the three and a half miles of brick streets. That we plan to keep as brick streets in perpetuity. We do not foresee any such conversion to brick, excuse me, to concrete or asphalt in the future, particularly because of the residential and historic characteristic of those streets in the city. So, we went along with the thought of, half the bricks would be stockpiled for future repairs, and we thought half could be, we thought could be sold at Landscape Recycling Center. And the thought at the Landscape Recycling Center is maybe kind of a dual offering to the public. One would be kind of a, I'll call it a "you pick 'em." There'd be a pile, you know, scattered out that, for a lesser price per brick, people, if they so wish, could pick them out. Or we could have a, I'll call it a palletized, or more cleaned and stacked pile on pallets. And we would not use, you know, public works labor to do that, because that's, of course, costly, but we would utilize, you know, the type of labor that we've used in the past, whether it be Lincoln's Challenge, or the Probations Office, Champaign County's probation office, or any other entity or group that would like to do such a thing. So that was the mindset we had. Then we heard, more recently, we, PACA's understanding of what they thought the bricks, who they belonged to. I want to clarify that the no-public work staff, or myself, made any such commitment of any bricks, pavers, on Broadway Avenue to PACA. And when this came about last Monday night, it certainly was, at least leading up to that meeting, a surprise to a large degree. So, hearing that, and hearing that PACA had made some commitments, thinking that these bricks were going to be, pavers were going to be in their possession, they had made a commitment, or multiple commitments, I'm not positive, to, it was reported to Dr. Youngrem, and there may have been others. So, I called to arrange a meeting, to see if there was a way that we could come to some sort of agreement for the brick pavers on Broadway Avenue. And I had spoken with Mr. Bob Swisher, and he invited Tom Garza, the executive director for PACA, to come and meet with me, and we did have such a meeting last Thursday. We tried to discuss some means or methods that we could come to an agreement. I had mentioned that the city position was, we needed some of those brick pavers for future repairs. I had mentioned that there was some interest in the community to have them more readily available. You know, we had arranged to do that through the Landscape Recycling Center, and perhaps we could work out some arrangement that some of those brick pavers could go to PACA. I tried to have an open discussion, and initially, had offered 30,000 brick pavers to the PACA representatives. They were not interested in that arrangement, and basically want to meet with you tonight to discuss this matter, as to they see fit, and not to the offering that I had suggested. So we didn't come to any kind of agreement. And so I prepared the memo before you. I listed various motions to be considered. Again, typically, these decisions are administrative decisions. They don't come to council. We don't come to you when we sell police squad cars and those sorts of things. But being that the heightened public awareness of this matter has come to light, I felt it was best that you, the council, weigh in on this decision. I've met with Mr. Simon. We've discussed, you know, this in some length, too, to be sure that we're on, you know, legal footing, solid, sound footing, which we believe we are. So the motions, or options that I have before you this evening are four. One is that we would, more or less, you know, move forward with the original plan, so that half the bricks would be used for future repairs, that we would need for those three and a half miles of streets that we plan to keep in perpetuity. And then we would have some bricks, pavers, available at the Landscape Recycling Center. That would be offered in a manner that I just discussed. The second option was something that I had offered, you know, with the PACA representatives, and that is, that we would still have about half those Broadway Avenue bricks would be still used for future repairs, and 25% of the remaining would be available for sale at Landscape Recycling Center, and 25% would be available to PACA for their needs, for their use. The third option is what the PACA representatives felt was their understanding, that all the brick pavers on Broadway should go to them. The fourth item was just some other option, some other direction given to staff from city council. So, that's kind of my report, and it's very unfortunate that there was such a huge discrepancy of understandings here. It's awkward, it's unfortunate. PACA serves the community very well in what they do. In the past, we've had arrangements on a project-by-project basis, where some or all brick pavers, or sidewalk pavers, have been used for their use and sale. And for our use, we do use our brick pavers also for landscaping purposes. If you walk outside the front doors here on Vine Street, you'll see them in the center median. We have them in other medians and other landscaping, too. So, they're not just, have been used for streets only, but we've used them. It's been asked of me about the boneyard beautification improvements, and you may recall, that was casualty when we tried to contain our costs back a few years ago. But could be reintroduced, too, maybe through some boneyard improvements in the future, so. But the main thing right now is, we want to be sure we have an ample supply for future repairs.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Gray? Dennis.
So Bill, in our Perkins yard right now, can you give me an estimate of how many pavers we have on hand?
I can't tell you a number exactly what that number is. It's, you know, several tens of thousands of bricks that are piled. We do have some that are palletized. Those were palletized by community service slash Lincoln Challenge workers back several years ago, when PACA arranged and came through and helped organize that. And the understanding at that time was, half those brick pavers that were palletized would go to PACA for their use, and half were city. So, there are some brick pavers that are palletized, but clearly, the majority are in large piles.
So does the city owe PACA any of the palletized pavers that they worked on and helped to palletize?
At Perkins Road Site, no, that's my understanding.
Mike.
Do you have any idea how many, how many pavers were generated from the Beckman Project?
I do not.
Okay. It's my understanding that it was north of a quarter million, and those all still sit on the Perkins site. Okay. Plus, tens of thousands in addition to that. So it's my understanding that there are potentially a half a million bricks, a half a million pavers on that site. Who knows? Maybe a lot of them are overgrown at this point, because they've been there for years. Again, who knows? So, that's beside the point. Here's my issue, and I'm going to sound a bit adversarial here, but believe me, I have a ton of respect for you. I think you do a tremendous job. In February of this year, when we first considered this, it was February 9th, and then the subsequent council meeting the week after, there was almost a joke made about, does anybody want any pavers, because we have more than we can ever use? So I'm trying to reconcile what happened between then and now, about the city's urgent need to preserve even one brick from Broadway.
Well, the Beckman paver bricks, first of all, a quarter million was just a number thrown out. There's no verification of that.
Okay.
Okay. Secondly, that was well over 20-plus years ago, that that project took about. Thirdly, yes, it's highly overgrown with trees and dirt, probably more dirt than there are bricks. It's very difficult to go through those piles, to sort them out, and it's very labor-intensive, so.
Like I say, that's kind of beside the point. I mean, but we do have a quarter million bricks that we probably allowed to be consumed by the environment over time.
Sure.
But, more to the point, though, is, I would like you to address the comments that were made in February about, we don't need any more bricks. I mean, that was, I recall it like it was yesterday. Those were very clear comments, that we didn't need any more bricks. So I'm trying to understand what happened between now and then.
The need for the bricks are just this, that we would like them removed in a careful way by the contractors, and stacked similar to the way they are out there now, which is very much brick, very little dirt, or any other deleterious materials. The Beckman bricks, if we want to call them that, were not removed that way. It was a more haphazard situation. So the point is, is that my staff looked at the amount of bricks that they felt they need for future purposes, and I took that recommendation as what we need for repairing those three and a half miles of street. Mr. Schonkner may want to add to that.
Okay, so, so let me get this straight. So then in February, we thought, okay, we have a half a million bricks, but now we're thinking that those will be too hard to recover, because of their state?
Sure. The ones that are buried in the Beckman pile are very difficult to recover, yes.
Craig, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, you know what? After we had our meeting in February, I came away from that meeting with the implication that council really wanted to save the remaining brick streets that we have. So, between February and now, me and the operations manager, John Collins, visited the woodsite, tried to do an assessment of what we had in place. I, too, like Bill, I don't have a number in mind here, but when I looked at what was out there, and there's a great amount of dirt mixed in, a lot of weeds, I can't tell, and I see what we have at Broadway, and those are really good bricks, too. And then we drove all of our brick streets in between then, and did an assessment. And in the meantime, started to, we put some money aside in the CIP this year, so we've started to bank some money to do brick streets. So in large amount, it was my assessment that happened between February and now, that was basically, we have a resource that we should keep. And I didn't want to come back to council sometime later and say to you, we gave them away, and we were going to have to go buy them from out of state, or another entity. So in essence, that's what happened.
Thank you.
Okay, so. Okay, so.
I'm Craig Schonkner, I'm an assistant city engineer.
Have you ever met me before?
No.
Thank you. I'd like to know who you were.
Okay, so, I guess, just to follow up on that, then, I appreciate that. So maybe is it possible that on February 9th, when the city council voted to replace Broadway with concrete, and it was expressed, as I'm sure the video recording of the meeting would show, that the city had no interest in the bricks? That, whether a phone call happened or not, and Mr. Swisher believes there was a phone call, and he produced, and I've distributed to the staff, the minutes of the PACA meeting from two days later, on February 11th, whereby they announced that the, announces to the board that PACA will be getting a lot more pavers. Urbana is going to replace the pavers from University to Crystal Lake Pool with concrete. PAC is also getting 50-plus pallets of pavers from Urbana, ones that they had already previously palletized. So in the minutes of their meeting two days later, and I'm really, I'm not trying to be adversarial here, I'm just saying, it's, I think it's reasonable for PACA to believe that they were going to receive a huge portion of those pavers, if not all of them. And so now we find ourselves in this situation, and I just, I just, I recall sitting here and hearing, we don't want the pavers. We don't need the pavers. And then PACA thinks, we don't want or need the pavers. And we've operated, it may be case by case, but it's been an oral arrangement over the years, and it's been the same arrangement every time. So whether it's been case by case, or whether it's been perpetual, it's still, it's something that's become the norm over the last decade. And so now we've put this venerable local institution in a spot. For what?
You know, I think, I'll direct this back to Bill. I just wanted to be here to let you know, from staff's perspective, that we understand that council wants to retain the brick streets. We have a plan to retain the brick streets, and we need some of the bricks to keep up with that plan. As far as whatever happened with Mr. Swisher, as you know, I mean, I don't know Mr. Swisher, but I'll turn it back over to Bill, so maybe I can get off the hot seat a little bit.
I'm not sure there was a question there, did you?
As far as the Beckman Avenue bricks, or Beckman Institute bricks are concerned, I did mention this earlier, but I did bring that up in our meeting with Mr. Swisher and Mr. Garza, that certainly we would be willing to allow them to dig into those piles, and mine those bricks, if you will. That was not of interest to them.
Right.
We would even, you know, use equipment to help, you know, dig through that a little bit. That had been done in years past.
Is that a possibility to have?
That's a possibility. I offered that Thursday, as a possibility. So, if there's, whatever thousands of bricks from the Beckman Institute are there, and if PACA and their volunteers want to go through those piles, we can make those arrangements.
Something that John Collins had offered to PACA previously, apparently, was that there are some, three very large and long concrete strips out there, that they could spread pavers on.
We've done that in the past.
Is that a possibility for the future, for some of the pavers that are out there?
It is.
Okay.
I had a question about the contract that was just bid out. It mentioned salvage in the contract language, but I'm not sure what that means. Was there any specification for what they were supposed to do with the bricks?
There is. The street's going to be built in phases, and the first phase, you know, the bricks would be going to the Perkins Road Site, you know, for future repair use. The second phase, and the specifications was to send the bricks to, pavers to the Landscape Recycling Center. That was, that was the intent.
But no, they weren't supposed to be palletized or anything? They were just basically supposed to be dumped?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that would, again, be extremely costly.
Okay. We do have some public input requests. Yeah, Aaron.
Thank you. So Bill, what were the, like, last two or three projects that we've done as a city that required the removal of pavers? And what did we do with all of those?
Mr. Swisher could probably tell you, brother and me, to be honest with you, I typically wasn't directly involved with that, but usually, there were some arrangement, whether it was Goodwin Avenue with the brick pavers, the Park Street by Provena, presence, brick pavers. Those were some recent projects. McCullough Street, between Maine, or, you know, Maine and Griggs were some of the most recent streets, and.
Did we keep any of those pavers?
I think, yeah, in some cases, we kept some of those pavers. I, I'm not here to tell you what exactly happened on each situation. I'd have to do that investigation, but I think in some of the more recent situations, there was a palletizing, where half the bricks would go to PACA, and half would go to the city. I know that the sites where bricks were taken, sometimes were vacant lots, sometimes they were, I know there's bricks that PACA has available up on North Lincoln Avenue at Saling Court, but I can't tell you what happened project-specific.
So, what I'm, what I'm hearing is that, for the, at least a couple of projects, McCullough, Goodwin, as well as, was it Park Street? Provena. We're talking thousands of pavers, probably, how many? Would you guesstimate how many we're talking about?
Yeah, it would be thousands.
Okay. Hundreds of thousands?
I can't answer that.
I'm just trying to get a rough idea of how we have handled these situations in the, in the past, in the more recent past. Because if there's nothing in writing that we've done with PACA up to this point, and we've had such a beneficial and cordial relationship with them up to this point, how did we construct agreements with them in the past? And would it be reasonable for them to logically conclude that they were going to get all, or half, or some reason, some large amount of the pavers from the project on Broadway? Since we've done this business with them like this over and over again, why wouldn't they, two days later, just come to the logical conclusion that the pavers were going to come to them, if that's what we've done in the past?
About two or three years ago, we pretty much, you know, stopped any interaction with PACA through any use of any, you know, brick pavers.
So it's been a few years since we've actually done any?
Correct, correct.
And so, would it be your position in that, because we haven't had any direct dealings with them, have we done any projects of removal of pavers in these past two or three years?
No, we have not.
So we wouldn't really have any reason to have any contact with them?
Correct.
But in the past, whenever there were pavers removed, PACA was the group that we knew we would work with in relationship to this. in relationship to this. So it is reasonable for them to conclude that they would have access to these pavers? In my opinion, maybe you don't agree with that, but I certainly think that that's, that's reasonable. And that's why I was trying to find out, based upon the level of this disagreement, which is certainly unfortunate that we would be, we would be, end up here. But I'm trying to find out what percentage of the pavers did we keep? And did we give to them on the other projects? And maybe that's a reasonable solution to this. That's why I'm asking you, what, what sort of percentage did they get and did we keep on the most recent projects in the past? Somebody has to have that answer, somebody within your department, though, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Charlie?
It sounds like a lot of those agreements, it was a 50-50 split. They cleaned them and palletized them, and we got half the pallets.
Yeah, I think some were that way. I can't answer for all of them.
Okay.
Diane?
So if we look at this from a little different perspective, and look at these pavers as a, as public property belonging to the city of Urbana, and as a resource for future maintenance, repair, landscaping needs, and possibly incorporating into some of the redevelopment projects that we hope to have underway in the downtown, and that's a very long clause, comma. If we were to give away all 120,000 bricks, what would be our next opportunity to get that many pavers to use as, to stockpile for the future? Are we going to be tearing up a street of that length in the, anytime in the future?
The answer is no. We don't plan to tear up any brick streets remaining in the city.
So, so this is it, as far as our opportunity to get high-quality bricks to stockpile for future use?
Correct.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, if there's no more questions?
I have one other comment, and I wanted to speak to, I don't find the idea or the notion that was sort of put out by Mr. Madigan, that have, allowing PACA the access to the stockpile of bricks from this Beckman project that was 20 years ago, is any sort of feasible solution to this issue that we're dealing with now. If nobody wants them, sure, we should allow them to have access to them. And in fact, I think that we could create a summer youth jobs program and get youth to go out, and we could pay them to go out and clean the pavers up to create opportunities for us here in the city. But I just didn't think that that was something that should be on the table as some sort of reasonable solution to this issue, to have, have them do that level of work as, because they could have had access to that a long time ago. I just wanted to make that, that a known. And do we have any idea of the three and a half miles of street that we have left, that we want to preserve? The number of bricks that we have, pavers that we have now, that are good quality? Or is it your position that that's not sufficient to maintain the three and a half miles? Or what we have stockpiled now, is it sufficient to maintain those three and a half miles?
We believe that the additional half pavers that are available on Broadway Avenue would, would give us that comfort level to be able to repair and maintain those three and a half miles of brick streets in town.
And you said half pavers, that threw me off a little bit, that's.
Half the available pavers on Broadway Avenue.
Oh, okay, that's what you, okay, thank you.
Dennis?
In my observation, in the past, and I don't know how long ago in the past, the city has done repair work, and I'm thinking about on East Illinois Street, where the repairs that were conducted, and it might have been sewage line repair, on a brick street were, the street was repaired not with actual original pavers, but with cement pour that was corrugated to appear like pavers. And the pavers then were, the corrugated cement was tinted red. So I've seen this a few times as a repaired, a repair solution for brick streets in the past. And I was wondering how that was possible as a solution, considering the conversation we're having tonight that is concerned with saving pavers to repair streets when they are damaged in the future.
I can't speak to why the stamped concrete paver brick look on East Illinois was used when the old railroad track was removed. But I do know that past city council had wanted a preservation of brick streets in the community. So staff takes that as if a brick is removed, or a portion of bricks, or what have you in a brick street, we want to replace that in bricks, and not in a stamped brick concrete manner. So, you know, that's, I can't speak for how that was done in excess of 25 years ago. I don't know the circumstances behind it, but you are correct. It's a colored concrete stamped brick where the railroad tracks used to cross. But, but if that was today, we would have removed the tracks and put in a cement base, concrete base with bricks, if that was today.
But it does answer a question that I had, and I was hoping that we wouldn't see that process.
We don't plan to use that process.
Okay, thanks. Craig, did you want to add anything?
I would just echo what Bill said. I mean, I think it's, it's my opinion that there's not enough bricks at the woodsite to maintain the three and a half miles that we do have. I think that we're at a very critical watershed moment with our resources. Broadway, it is our intent, as, as Bill said, that Broadway would be our last street that we would convert from henceforth. It doesn't mean that we won't come back if there's an emergency situation, because as we know with McCullough, they can, the subbase can, you know, get waterlogged. And like I mentioned to you, you know, in February, the, sometimes these brick pavements can unzip. But my, my intent, me and my staff's intent, is to maintain the, the brick pavements that we have. As a matter of fact, we've been discussing doing, starting our annual brick patching next year. So that's where, I just wanted to confirm that.
Okay, thanks. And how long is Broadway? Quarter mile?
That's a good question. I would say about a quarter mile, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions before public comment? Okay, Dennis?
Sorry, but this occurred to me. What's the likelihood that at some time in the future, there might be a desire to actually reintroduce brick in downtown areas as a historic feature? In that it's also environmentally desirable as a permeable pavement? So I, I mean, we're talking about current conditions and current repair, but what about a vision of actually restoring streets in the downtown area? Maybe these streets would be, you know, associated with, with, you know, maybe could be Griggs Street next to the boneyard. If we ever did repair on a street that was damaged, would we ever consider restoring the historic look of the city using brick pavers that we have on stock? Or would it be just out of the ballpark, too expensive because of the labor involved? Which always seems to be coming up in the conversations about streets and street choices, as far as materials.
I think we would need to have that discussion of whatever that street or possible street project is, and look at the length, width, scope of it, and come up with those costs accordingly, and, and see if we identified that funding source to do that sort of project. So it's not to say that could never happen, but.
But it's highly hypothetical, huh?
I'm sorry?
It would be highly hypothetical that that would occur?
It's really the will of the council. If they want to see that sort of pavement somewhere, you know, that can be done. I just, we would work with you and see where that would be, you know. I think they can certainly be used. As I mentioned earlier, there, there are maybe some augment, augment some landscaping features, or if there's a Founder's Park, and there's some bordering you wanted to do, or that sort of thing, there's some possibilities, but again, those aren't going to be lots of bricks necessarily. I think what Craig is saying, what I'm saying tonight, is really the, half the brick pavers available on Broadway, in addition to what we currently have stacked, stockpiled, are really brick that we'd like to have targeted for future brick repairs.
Mayor Presson?
I just want to say something in favor of brick streets. My youngest daughter lives in Chicago, and they have these traffic mounds in the middle of the street to slow down the traffic. If you have a brick street, boy, that really slows down the traffic.
Okay, thank you. We have three members of public that wanted to comment on this. First is Sarah Nemeth. Do you want Mr. Swisher to go first? Okay, Bob Swisher. Now, remind you that you have five minutes.
Really?
That's, that's our, that's our rule for public input.
Can he have my five minutes?
We'll be a little lenient. If someone, if someone wants to move for more time, we can do that.
I was just made aware of a news release, or a resolution that the city of Urbana made out, that seems like it's all cut and dried, and that PACA's already out, hung out to dry. I didn't see it until right about the meeting, and I saw it on a telephone. First of all, I'd like to apologize to Dr. Youngerman and his family on the 150th anniversary of Joseph Kuhn and Company in downtown Champaign. It's a shame that he had to be brought into this, but the way he was brought into it was, sometime after the city voted to get rid of bricks and go to concrete on Broadway, there was an article published by Mr. Mitchell in the Gazette that he read. And he called the city of Urbana and said, he or his people, I should say, called the city of Urbana, I don't know exactly where, and expressed a desire to buy 20,000 of those pavers. He was told to see PACA and Bob Swisher, that they would be in charge of that. He came to PACA on the Saturday morning following that article, and said, well, you sell me 20,000 pavers at the same condition you sold me 10,000 last year. And I said, yes. Those conditions were 50 cents apiece, palletized in white canvas bags and delivered to his site. So that explains Dr. Youngerman's involvement in this thing. And, and I, I can't attest to any more than that. Now, if I were to be given permission to go back to the original meeting that I had with the mayor, we had a long meeting, it was already discussed. And the end of that meeting, she said she would call Mr. Gray and get in touch with me. She called the next day and said that she and Mr. Gray had discussed the situation at great length. And the pavers that were now presently stacked in Perkins Road, which PACA refers to as the yo-yo pavers. She said those pavers that Mr. Gray had agreed to give, if we palletized all of those, Mr. Gray would give us half of those. So I said, what about Broadway Avenue, which was the intention of my whole thing? She said, we didn't address that subject. And I said, well, I'd like to address that subject. She said, I will arrange for a meeting with Mr. Gray and Mr. Collins for you to attend and address that subject. The next day, Mrs. Ross, who is Secretary to the Mayor, called me, and said that she'd been instructed to set up a meeting with Mr. Gray and Mr. Collins, when would I be available? That records indicated that the urban plant, at the Public Works thing, that both Mr. Collins and Mr. Martin would be available at 1:00 on such and such day. And where would I like to have the meeting held? And I said, well, it's 2:00 to 1:00. I'd like to have it in my living room, but that probably isn't going to happen. And there was no response from Mrs. Ross. And she said, well, I imagine the meeting would have to be held at the city building or at the Public Works. I said, that's fine. So I went to the appointed meeting, and Mr. Collins met me in the hall. And we went down to his little office, and he sat in his comfortable chair. And I'm a little claustrophobic in a small room. And I felt that Mr. Collins had the advantage here, and I asked if Mr. Gray was coming. He said he was unavailable, and I could share my grievances with him. We agreed on a number of things. First of all, there's 120,000 pavers on Broadway Street. I know this because Mr. Clancy from Burns and Clancy and I went with a wheel to Broadway Street, and we spent over an hour there. We measured it, we came back, and I can tell you, three rows of pavers, deleting the half pavers at each end. There's 100 pavers in three rows. So one foot of, of pavers equals 100 pavers that are good in usable conditions. We took the square footage of the asphalt as covering some of that, and we determined, with just simple math, that there's 120,000 pavers on Broadway Avenue. I don't think Mr. Gray disagrees with that, and I know that, that that was one of the points that Mr. Collins agreed with me, too. Mr. Collins asked me, I gave him the two-page overdraft that you were all furnished with last week, and he read it, he made some pencil marks on it, and he asked me what I meant by early in the year. And I said, I suppose I mean January and February. And he said, well, you're at a real disadvantage there, because I don't believe the Broadway pavers were even on, on the radar until March or April. And I said, well, you know, I don't know either, but, but, you know, I maintain that this misunderstanding. I had a call. So when I had this reported call, I went to the president of PACA, Mr. Brian Duffield, and, and I told him of what my circumstances was. I said, we're going to get 120,000 pavers on, well, I didn't know it was 120,000 then. This was in, in February. And he reported such to, to the board of directors. I furnished the minutes for that meeting, and when I was with Mr. Collins, he pointed out that the disadvantages I had in this debate. First of all, it was he said, we said. The bricks were in his possession, and possession was nine tenths of the law. He could deny, or Mr. Gray could deny, that there was ever any conversation about giving the pavers to us, because nothing was in paper. Nothing was written down. I had no written evidence of this. That's when I terminated the meeting and left. I called the city building and talked to Mrs. Ross, and told her I was disappointed that Mr. Martin, Mr. Gray was not there. And I asked her to express those feelings to, to the mayor. Consequently, a few days later, Mr. Gray called my telephone answering, we were out of town and on the answering machine when I got back from Indianapolis. Mr. Gray had called about 8:00 in the morning and asked for a meeting. And this gave me a lot of hope. I thought, well, maybe we got some room here for, for some agreement. As he said, Mr. Vols and I went to that meeting. And prior to the meeting, I told Mr. Gray that I, I didn't want Mr. Collins to be there, that my meeting with him was very negative. That he could bring any other employee with a, from the Urbana Public Works, or I suggested that he bring Jack Waller, a retired city attorney. And he said bringing Mr. Waller wouldn't be necessary. He thought the three of us could work something out. So the three of us went to that meeting, and the first few minutes of the meeting were not productive at all. A lot of charges were made, and, and Mr. Garza not put his hand on my knee, I would have probably left the meeting. But after that, everything calmed down, and Mr. Gray went to the blackboard, or not a blackboard, but a whiteboard with a marker. And he stood there for quite some time and didn't say anything. And then he wrote down the figure 60,000. Then next to that, he wrote down the figure 30,000. And next to that, he wrote down the figure 30,000. Underneath that, he wrote 60,000. So in a little bit, he explained what the first 60,000 was. He said that's how many papers he would need to repair three and a half miles of brick streets in Urbana. The next 30,000 were going to be to offer the public, the citizens of Champaign-Urbana, 30,000 pavers for sale at, at the yard where they sell woodchips. The other 30,000 he would need for future inventory. The 60,000 that were extra were what I refer to as the yo-yo stack. I thought I already had half of. I thought from the mayor's call that PACA had been given half of those. So I said, isn't it convenient that all your figures add up to 120,000, and that's exactly what we have on Broadway Street? The other disadvantage I've had in this whole 10-year relationship, and only six and a half years of it actively involved Urbana, was I've, I've worked by word of mouth and handshake agreements with four different supervisors. It started off with Mr. Kelly, went to Mr. Crone, it must, to Mr. Stratton. It started off with Mr. Kelly, went to Mr. Crone, it must have been Mr. Stratton, and then it ended up with Mr. Collins. When we started this, Mr. Collins was likely, more than likely to be the person that came out in the third year and turned bricks. And yes, Mr. Collins, in the fifth year, suggested that we spread them out on concrete, which was a great help. The first year, when Mr. Kelly came to me, I was under the impression from things that he had said, that he and Mr. Gray had had a conversation and was there any possibility that PACA might be interested in getting these pavers. So he came to me and he said, we don't have any place to put them. Our lot on Perkins Road is filled with the Beckman pavers. Could you furnish a place to put them? And I said, well, let's see if we could sell them first. So next door to us, the guy that owns Radio Maria owns the building and has a little backyard that's 30 by 60, and they dumped four loads of pavers there. I ran a little paragraph in my article that said anybody who was interested in pavers for 50 cents apiece, they could come and get them. That's what started, we have sold 200,000 pavers in 10 years to the citizens of Champaign, Urbana. So supplying a few pavers to the woodchip lot because there's a need, I think we filled that need. The first six and a half years, we did at PACA about $72,000 worth of pavers at 50 cents apiece. The intervening three years, the reason we didn't do anything for the intervening three years was I was told that the yo-yo stack was going to be used for beautification on a city boneyard. And if there were any bricks left over from the beautification project, after they used the pavers to put along the banks, PACA could resume palletizing those and we would still get half of those. During that three-year law, we sold 30,000 pavers for the City of Champaign. Also in that three-year law, we palletized 120 pallets for the City of Champaign behind Metal Gold. They gave us 40 pallets as our share, but Mr. Schmidt didn't want them at his lot. And he talked to somebody in Urbana to bring in those 40 pallets to Perkins Street. Mr. Collins and his crew brought them over themselves. And they put them in the weeds. I asked to be put on the concrete pads because I'd had experience with them on the weeds before. So for three and a half years or three years, 40 pallets sat there along with the yo-yo pile that belonged to PACA.
I'm wondering if, this is very interesting, it was a history of the previous six years, but to bring it up to the point of today, what is your hope for the pavers? You expect that you are given the opportunity to take all of them and sell them at PACA? Is that what you expect? And that, what is the result, or what is your belief in the remaining pile, which you call the yo-yo pile, that is the disrupted pile of pavers at the yard at Perkins?
Okay, I think Mr. Gray said at a meeting with Tom and I that I am qualified to talk about the pavers. He said, you are the paver man. The yo-yo pile is probably 60,000 pavers. Now, let me stress, it's 90% pavers and 10% weeds and dirt. I mean cherry pick, really, it's easy. In three and a half hours, I can have a pallet filled. Along the road on the east side of Perkins Road, inside of the lot, I would estimate in those piles above surface is at least 120,000 pavers. Now, I estimate this because for four years, we dug them out of those piles. We cleared a whole block in that area. And that's about 80% dirt and 20% pavers. When we found a group of four pavers in a little cluster, we really enjoyed it because they're just few and far between. It's really labor intensive. At the start of all this, Mr. Kelly and Mr. Crone took me deeper into the pile where Mr. Gray is right, there's weeds and trees and everything there. And Mr. Kelly estimates that buried in a hole back there are probably a quarter of a million pavers. In a hole that was probably, he said, 20 foot deep or a valley or a crescent, that there were so many pavers that they leveled it out. So I imagine if all those trees were cleared and the weeds were cleared, a guy could go in there with a bucket on a, so there's an abundance of pavers out there. But the only ones that are really easy to get are in the yo-yo pile. I think that my meeting with Mr. Collins, he agreed that there were 60,000 in that pile. Now, if I could address, we started three and a half years ago to palletize those. When I left, because I was called off because of the beautification project, PACA had the 40 pallets of things that came from Champaign, and we had 37 full pallets that we had palletized out of the yo-yo thing. When I went back a few months ago, there were 37 and a half pallets of the 40, but they'd been picked over back in the weeds and they were grown up with dense trees and weeds all around them. And there were only 19 pallets left. I asked Mr. Collins as to where they all went and he said, well, we could use them repairs. He said, you have the only other key other than the city people, maybe you use them. Well, I hadn't been out there for a couple of years, so somewhere from 37 down to 19, they disappeared. So I would imagine that maybe some of those were used on Illinois Street for repairs.
So it does seem, it does seem likely that some of those pallets, since they were ready, would be used. So from that lot, did you then receive all the ones, all the ones that you palletized that came from the City of Champaign? Have you removed those already under the on your property, a different location?
To this point, I've never sold an Urbana paver to anybody other than the citizens of Champaign, Urbana. But last Monday, I sold those 37 and a half pallets from the City of Champaign and the nine pallets, which were given my share of the half of 19, to a jobber in Milwaukee. He came down on Monday and Tuesday and they're all gone.
So those are dispersed.
I got 35 cents of paper for them.
So those are dispersed.
Pardon?
So those were dispersed and you received those?
Monday and Tuesday, they're gone.
So we're even with the old, the old pavers were even with that and that's been satisfied? So now we're just talking about the pavers that might come up from Broadway?
Yes.
So to summarize, 46 pallets of pavers were sold to Milwaukee last week?
Plus nine from those 37 that I had that were left, which was my half of the 19 that were left, yeah. They were sold for 35 cents.
Those were Champaign or Urbana pavers and they went to Wisconsin?
37 and a half pallets were Champaign ones, nine were the Urbana ones. And PACA received a check for $4,400 for those. And they are no longer out there. So what we have out there now is the yo-yo pile, which is at least 60,000 pavers that are only 10% obstacle, dirt and weeds and so forth. The longer they're there, the more there will be more weeds and more dirt and et cetera and so forth. Plus all the ones from Beckman, which as Mr. Gray testified, have been there 20, 25 years and they're very hard to remove.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Swisher? Mayor?
Okay, one of Bill Gray's suggestions is to give you 25% of the Broadway Avenue bricks, which would be 30,000, correct? Because there's supposed to be 120,000 there.
No, that wasn't in the offering. He would give us...
Well, he just said it here. He said 25% to PACA and 25% for landscape recycling center for the public and 50% for the reserves. So that would give you 30,000. That would give you 30,000. So would that be enough to sell to Dr. Youngerman and your other customers?
Well, what I don't understand is why all of a sudden the City of Urbana needs to offer 30,000 bricks available to the public when we've sold 200,000 bricks to the public in the last 10 years? I mean, do you really feel that we've shortchanged the public on being available to buy pavers?
Well, my question was, would the 30,000 be good for PACA? So would you like to have the...
I was under the impression when you called me the other day that you gave us 30,000 of the yo-yo.
Well, I'm talking now about Broadway. So that was one of the proposals here. It looks reasonable and I'm just asking you if the 30,000 would solve the problem?
30,000 would be better than nothing.
Nice, good Broadway Avenue pavers, 30,000 of them.
I said 30,000 would be better than nothing.
Okay. Do we have a deal?
Did I answer your question?
Do we have a deal or not?
Well, no, I'd like to come out of this meeting with half of the yo-yo stack and 120,000 pavers from Broadway. That's what was offered to me and that's what I think we will get. If that isn't available, then I'll walk out of here with 30,000 pavers.
Okay, Diane?
Are we ready to make motions on this?
We still have two more topic inputs. If there's no more questions, then we can move on to the next.
Well, I have a question.
Charlie?
Mr. Swisher, what I don't understand here is that in none of the past arrangements with PACA, has PACA walked away with all of the bricks? It seems like the city has always kept half or something like that. You've palletized them and the city keeps half and you get the other half to sell. So I don't know why you think you...
That isn't true.
But that seems to be what the record shows, that a lot of, you know, the yo-yo pile that you were working on, you know, you got half, we got half. That was the last, the last deal.
The first six and a half years, the City of Urbana never took a brick.
Okay, so, okay. And so now, and now staff is saying that there is a need to have some of those bricks to repair the rest of our streets. I mean, that's a very reasonable thing to be saying here. And given the state, you know, if we're done replacing, if we're done tearing up brick streets and staff says we need 40,000 from the yo-yo pile and 60,000 from Broadway for basically 100,000 stockpiled bricks down the road to maintain our, that seems to be a very reasonable number to me. And so I don't understand where your, you know, the idea that 120,000 is what you're due, that doesn't make any sense to me.
Mike?
I can help answer that. We all sat here in a meeting February 9th where we were explicitly told that the city needed, had no interest in having any more bricks. So I think, I think it's fair for Mr. Swisher and PACA to have an expectation based on those public comments. Now, if things have changed between now and then, which I think, I think we've heard, apparently they have, well then maybe some other, you know, lesser accommodation needs to be made. But there were very explicit public comments made in this very chamber, which would lead them to believe that they were going to be made available for their use and their sale, all of those bricks. So I mean, I think that's, that's where the, where the problem lies. Now, the question is now, what do we do?
Somebody, somebody, it sounds like somebody jumped the gun.
Right. So the question now is, what do we do?
Well, I think, we have some proposals and I'd like to hear what...
Yeah, but in my humble opinion, 30,000 is way too small.
Let's try to reserve some discussion for after the public comment. Did anyone else have any questions for Mr. Swisher? Okay, then Sarah Nemeth, did you want to still speak?
If Bob wants to say any more, that would be fine. He could make his own comments. Because I think he knows a whole lot more.
We understand that. He explained a lot last week too, and some of this has been kind of recapping what he explained last week.
I'd like to be given the opportunity to hop up here like Mr. did in rebuttal if I could, on Don Road. Thank you.
Okay, that was actually the only other paver input. The other ones are for other issues later in the meeting. So now we'll have discussion on the issue. You have one for a different issue, Darrell.
I know, I just have a paver issue I'm going to bring up.
Or Darrell, yeah, it's, you can only speak to one issue, or you can only speak one time. Do you want to speak now or...
As a councilman?
Yes.
Yes.
Five minutes.
You can speak on multiple issues, but you only speak one time. So if you want to speak now, you can.
But then I can't speak later.
Right.
I'll have to pass.
Okay. So discussion, do we have any, does anyone, would anyone like to put a motion on the table for discussion?
I'd like to clarify something. So, you know, as a citizen and also as a council member, I've seen all kinds of different variations as it comes to public comments. And I'm always supportive of public comments. Is there some rule that allows staff to just simply come up and make comments like that? Is that... No, he was not asked to come and answer any questions. He chose to come up and sit in the seat. Bill Gray was answering questions. So it appears to the public that just some random person is able to just simply come walk up to the microphone and start answering questions.
Well, this was, this was part of staff report. I think it's discretion of the Chair to allow staff to speak when they want. Anyone else?
That's clear. Thank you.
Okay. So would anyone like to put a motion on the table? Dennis?
Yeah. Right, so I'm thinking that we should support PACA, but we should also be somewhat conservative and consider the needs of the future, brick paving of the city. And it's true that the city has perhaps undisclosed amounts of brick under the earth at the Perkins Web site, storage site. But it's also true that unearthing them is going to take effort coordinated. It's expensive to do it if you're going to be using staff time. So if you're using volunteer time, that's going to take a long time. Who's the best brick uncoverers in the county? That's PACA. I would say, I don't know what the disposition for the remaining yo-yo pile would be, but certainly for the boneyard, for the bricks that come out of Broadway. If in the past we've split them evenly, I think we should do it again. We'll, you know, my suggestion is that we remove the bricks, allow PACA to take half of them and sell as they wish to. We retain half of them. And if we want to take a quarter of them down to the recycling center and offer them, that's fine. I guess that would be considered one of the city's outlets for dispersal of public property that is useful to the community. But I certainly think that we ought to be giving PACA more than a quarter of them based on our long history with them and our, and that would be my motion.
Second. Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Diane?
First of all, let me say I appreciate very much everything PACA has done for the community. I was in the store just last week. Usually I go in there and see something that I didn't know I needed and, you know, so it's a great resource. However, when it comes to pavers, I think something has changed with this, with regard to the Broadway pavers. First of all, these brick pavers are public property belonging to the City of Urbana. They're a public resource, just like our trees, like our public sewer system, like the money that we're stewards of. And our first responsibility are to be stewards of these public resources. And if it's been determined that we're not going to have another supply in quantity of brick pavers and that we're going to be needing these pavers to maintain brick streets, landscaping and repairing brick streets, then I think our first duty is to make sure we have a reasonable supply of pavers so that we don't have to purchase them in the future. And I think we should be erring on the side of being conservative in that way. So I think the offer of 30,000 pavers to PACA is reasonable. It would allow them to fulfill the commitment they made to Dr. Youngerman of 20,000 and it would give another 10,000 or so for sale. If we wanted to give a little more latitude, we could authorize the Public Works Director perhaps to release up to additional 30,000 pavers if and only if they determine that they're not going to be needed for future projects or for, for the use, for public use by the city. And, and again, I go back to this is a public resource and, and a city, and we are stewards of the public resource. So I would favor 30,000 to begin with, with perhaps some latitude to release some more later. But that's my position on that.
Anyone else? Charlie?
I would remind us that anything we do right now would be directions to staff that we're not able to make a, you know, ordinance level or even resolution level type situation. So whatever motions are made are directions to staff for the disposition of this property. I think unless Jim corrects me, otherwise I think that's within our, our ability here tonight. That's...
I tend to side with what Diane just said.
I tend to side with what Diane has said, though I also am interested in allowing PACA to go out and mine the Beckman site. Now, to my understanding, that Beckman stuff was placed there with the idea strictly that it was fill and without any idea, you know, without any intention to go back and, and go after it. But if there's edges or whatever that can be accessed with a payloader and spread out on the concrete beyond the sixty thousand in the so-called yoyo pile that, which I guess the city also needs, I guess it's a hundred and twenty thousand is what you're estimating overall that you want. Is that right, Craig? Hundred and twenty, hundred, no, I'm talking to Craig behind you, his staff members. So city wants to stockpile a hundred and twenty thousand. So, so beyond that stocking of a hundred and twenty thousand, I think it's, my, my idea in February was to, to make these available to the public. And so if our interpretation is PACA is making them available to the public, you have thirty thousand, there's potentially another thirty thousand there in, on Broadway, you know, I'm, I'm more flexible there.
Okay. Attorney Jim Simon, do you want to clarify the motion?
At this point, you are not authorized under your rules and under the Open Meetings Act to take any final action on this, whether it's to direct staff to enter into some agreement or otherwise. That would be a final action. There's no agenda item with a resolution or an ordinance on the agenda, and it is the council, or I should say the committee's practice to make recommendations to the council. So what you can do is, whatever this motion, however you wish to state it, it would be in the form of a recommendation to council. A resolution would be drafted at that point.
Okay. Aaron?
Yeah, I, I don't know what the motion is exactly. I didn't, I thought we were still discussing this. I didn't know we were actually-
I can try to restate the motion and, and recommendation for him. You can correct me if I'm wrong. Dennis made a motion to recommend to staff that we provide half of the Broad, sixty thousand, actually. He said sixty thousand of the Broadway bricks to PACA and reserve sixty thousand for our own use. Is that right?
And so according-
It was a fifty-fifty split, and I recommended-
So according to what the city attorney says, that we, we can't vote on a, on that particular act, right? So that-
No, we can vote on a recommendation.
Okay. So first and foremost, I would say that as we talk about being stewards, I completely understand that if there's a need that has arisen or has come up that we need to address, that we should do that, and we should be prepared to do that, to preserve the three and a half miles that we want to preserve. I do think the point that Mr. Madigan raises about us sort of saying, who wants any more bricks? I remember that very vividly in February. So I don't know why staff wouldn't have known in February that we would need to preserve three and a half miles of brick and would say we needed to stockpile that. And if we were so conscientious about preserving brick streets, why would we bury two hundred and fifty thousand good pavers that we can't get to now? Why weren't we cleaning them and stacking them and doing all these things with them all along? So we would have a stockpile of them. And so from, from my perspective, I think it's also extremely important as representatives of the city to make sure that we, that we preserve relationships and honor agreements that we have with entities like PACA who have done tremendous work for us and been there when we needed them. So at this point, to try to cover, what I'm comfortable with is whatever the number is that we need, and I think, Bill, you said that's somewhere around a hundred thousand pavers, good pavers for us to maintain the three and a half miles? Am I correct in that? Somewhere around there?
A hundred and twenty thousand is the number we're using.
Hundred and twenty thousand pavers. And we have stockpile for our use at this particular point. How many?
We believe around sixty thousand.
Around sixty thousand. So if we had sixty thousand from Broadway, we'd have the hundred and twenty thousand that we want.
Correct.
Okay. And that would leave sixty thousand for PACA. Now, I would say this, that from a steward standpoint of the city, we should have first crack at the sixty thousand that we need to make sure they are solid, good pieces to use to maintain the three and a half miles that we need to preserve. And then PACA would have to go through the remainder, remaining sixty, and whatever you salvage from that, PACA has to do what they would like to do with them. We have what we need. PACA has an sufficient amount of bricks to work with. And I think that somehow, going forward, if we have the mechanical ability, why wouldn't we unearth the other two hundred and fifty thousand bricks and use them and preserve them or sell them or whatever? Why wouldn't we do that at some point if we have the ability to do that? And so I, I understand. I mean, you know, we, there's a lot of things that are expensive. If we really want to do it, though, then we, we make the, the effort to make it happen.
Okay. I'm starting to see a consensus form, but Dennis, would you like to say something else?
Well, one other point that I question, I guess, is that if it's vital for the city to retain them for the future, there's no point then to open up a sales yard at the recycling center to get rid of some of them. It seems to me that that's counterproductive to the point of archiving them for the future.
Diane?
Well, I'd agree with that. I mean, to be conservative, but that's, I think it's a decision that we should leave up to our, our staff. But to, to, to Mr. Ammons' point, often when you have a resource, especially an environmental resource, you don't start to value it until you see the end of the supply. And in this case, the end of the supply of easy-to-access, relatively clean pavers is, is in sight. And so that's why I would vote for being conservative and reserving at least seventy-five percent of the Broadway street pavers until we know for sure, maybe a couple of years down the line. There's a lot of brick street, you know, I lived on a brick street for, for twenty-seven years, and I value them highly, and I know the people who live on them do, and I can see lots of potential uses for these pavers that would enhance the city. And I, I continue to think a thirty thousand initially to PACA would be reasonable to help them fill the commitments that they made in advance of actually having the bricks and without any kind of, you know, firm agreement or even understanding of how many there were. And then, but I'm leaving at that.
Mike?
So, I mean, I, I appreciate everybody's comments on, on this, but I guess where I am coming down to is staff is now telling us that, well, we didn't need any more than, than the sixty that we had in, in inventory. We do need another sixty. Apparently, there's a hundred and eighty available. So I support Dennis's motion to split the bricks on Broadway. That leaves the sixty on Perkins Road that are readily accessible for the city's use. I see absolutely no benefit to have any of these hauled to the Landscape Recycling Center for people to pick through when PACA is actually going to make them available to, to the public on, on the same terms. So unless somebody can enlighten me about why the Landscape Recycling Center needs a bunch of bricks, a bunch of pavers, excuse me, other than a few thousand dollars, which frankly, it'll probably cost the city more in some way, shape, or form to maintain, I would, I would support Dennis's motion and allow, like I said, a valuable organization in our neighborhood to have a continued source of revenue.
Okay. Let's go ahead and have a vote on the motion on the floor is to share the Broadway bricks fifty-fifty with PACA. Oh, it's a recommendation to staff to share. Oh, go ahead.
If you want to take, you know, a final action, it can't be tonight. You can't direct staff to share a resource with anybody in a committee. That's a final action. So what, you know, ah.
So if I amended my motion to-
Recommend.
To, to recommend that staff then provide a, to draft a resolution for next weeks for the, for the, for the regular meeting of the city council that we could approve, and it would be a fifty-fifty split with the PACA and between the PACA and city, then we might need a way of resolving this in one week.
Does that agreeable to the second? Okay. As part of that, would you drop, and there would be dropping, putting anything at the Landscape Recycling Center? Is implied in that?
That'd be the second part of it, yes. That we would then omit the idea of taking any bricks to Landscape Recycling Center because we need all our bricks we can get.
Okay. Thank you. Aaron?
I would like to make a friendly amendment to this, but I don't know if it's going to be as clear as I hope it would be. But I do believe that the city has to have, we're not just talking about, here's sixty thousand. We sift through them and find out that only forty-five thousand of them work, and then we don't have the number that Bill is talking about. My, my friendly amendment is that we have first dibs on cleaning, getting the pavers that we need to maintain the streets. And when, once we get to sixty thousand, what is left, PACA has access to, to do what they need to do with. That's what I would propose as a friendly amendment to what you're putting forward.
Does that agreeable to the original man?
All right. I can accept that because partly because then the city is going to be responsible then for cleaning up the bricks first. PACA won't be coming in to do any work until it's their turn. I think that's pretty fair. And also, whatever is remaining, and if it happens to be sixty-two thousand instead of sixty, well, PACA gets a little bonus.
Okay. Well, I would agree with that, and I think we ought to have further discussion, too, about allowing PACA to continue to maybe mine the resources out of Perkins as well beyond the, the sixty thousand. But that can be a discussion for another day.
Okay. We have a motion with some staff direction to bring us a resolution next week. Are there any other questions or comments on the motion that we're voting on? Diane?
I got lost about halfway through. What is the motion with regard to the LRC?
It's my understanding to leave out any, any reference to keeping bricks at the LRC. For, for public, for public sale. I mean, any bricks stored for the city would be for city use. I understand the motion to be. Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
You can say it louder than that, Diane. Say it like you mean it.
Bill, did you have anything, any questions or anything else?
I do. I have one more staff report I have.
Okay, good.
And actually, it has to do with Broadway Avenue. Now, the, this coming Monday night, July twenty-ninth, at the Anita Purvis Nature Center from five to seven P.M., we have a information meeting about the Broadway Avenue project, and this has more to do with the actual construction, who the contractor is, what the phasing is, length of the project. Any residents that may have particular needs as far as access or have questions about access, things of that sort, those questions will be answered this coming Wednesday night, July twenty-ninth, between five and seven P.M. at the Anita Purvis Nature Center. And folks that live adjacent to the project should already have a notification for this meeting. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is our approval of minutes of the previous meeting from July thirteenth. Is there a motion for approval?
Second.
Moved by Smythe, seconded by Ammons to approve the minutes. Any discussion or corrections? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Now we have public input. I have three people that would like to speak. Or two people that would like to speak. First, I have a note from Bishop King James and Reverend Evelyn Underwood. They do not wish to adjust the committee, but ask that their positions be entered in the record that they're continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. Next, I have Daryl Fausti.
Good evening. I'd like to talk about an area of the Boneyard Creek in Urbana that's bounded roughly by just west of Strawberry Fields and the Opera House Apartments, just east of the Phillips Recreation Center, and between Main Street on the north and Springfield Avenue on the south. This is an area that's zoned B two. It's an area that the Boneyard Creek flows through there. Many years ago, it meandered through closer to Main Street, came back across underneath the, the Opera House Apartments and Spring, and Strawberry Fields, over to First Federal Parking Lot, then back across Springfield Avenue underneath between the liquor store and the federal attorney's office. Well, the issue is that then in the nineteen sixties, they dredged it out approximately four feet. There is a four-feet drop-off or waterfall at Lincoln Avenue where the Boneyard Creek crosses, just north of Green Street. And in my opinion, and in the opinion of Dr. Alberto Nieto, who was on the geology, who was a geology professor, is now a professor emeritus. He has a PhD in geology and a PhD in civil engineering. What happens when they dredge down in the sixties, they dredge down below the water table. And just as you have a, a hole dragging it through a mud puddle, as soon as it goes through the mud puddle, the water goes back in, fills in. Well, I first noticed that when I bought the house at four oh nine West Main. It had, the back part of the house had dropped almost a foot to the front part of the house. So before we did anything, the city said I should hire an engineer. So I hired this person, Bartholomew and Associates. I don't think they're in business anymore. But as he put a probe in the, in the, around the basement in the footing, he said, well, there's a lot of voids around here. He said, I guess this house just wasn't backfilled properly. Well, I, that didn't add up to me. But we went on and filled, fixed it up and jacked it up and, and put oversized footings, twenty-four inches by twenty-four inches. And as a matter of fact, today, my house is still settling, and it pops, and the walls are, corners are going like this, and there's cracks all over. And it shouldn't be that way. The house that's next door to, was four eleven, is when I first met a demolition contractor, Roger Miller, in nineteen eighty. He'd just finished demolishing it. And the original house at four thirteen West Main was demolished, demolished in nineteen seventy-six. It, too, had broken apart. And I recall walking through the original Opera House apartment buildings. There were, the walls had cracked and broken apart. I could easily put my fist right between where the bricks had pulled apart. And now today, at that very site where there was a new apartment building built in the late nineties, that, too, is starting to crack apart. The Phillips Recreation Center to the west, the previous building there was the Thornburn Center. It broke apart. They told me it was bad concrete. Well, what used to be the Springfield IGA is there, and when that became kind of a little mini mall, they added that little walkway out front. Well, the back steps of that just kind of kept dropping, and so much, they broke apart. And now then, they have just been removed. There are still cracks up on the bricks where the brick is falling apart. Now then, I, I had proposed to have either a, a public park, or if not that, a big building. Because Professor Alberto Nieto said, you can build in this location, but you just have to have the footings down below the level of the Boneyard Creek. Well, that makes sense. They can build like that. There is a building at Fourth and Green in Champaign, a twenty-four-foot, a twenty-four-story building. So they're building close to the Boneyard Creek. I'd really like to see Urbana build something big, something that's an eye catcher. Why can't we? Why should we just have, settle for little apartment buildings? What would that do to our tax base and to our income for Urbana if we could have a big structure? So my point is here is to let you know that there's an at-risk area. This used to be an old buffalo wallow, if you will. I think Councilman Roberts is familiar with, with that aspect. And I do know from the research that I got from the Urbana Library that there was a place there where Kirby's- And I do know from the research that I got from the Urbana Library that there was a place here where Kirby's Firestone is and, and where the old iron, the Flatiron Building was, where they put all kinds of debris, including railroad ties, railroad rails, to fill in this, this sinkhole, this, kind of like quicksand, till they got it all done. I do know that when they-
You have one minute.
Okay. Maybe I can ask a little bit more if it needs. But anyway, they hid all kinds of items in there, and it kind of really made it difficult doing a soil test. But I would like to see there is a, is a large building that had business on the first floor, offices on the second floor, and then apartments on up. We have the two courthouses. Reason I bring that up is because I had some attorneys that wanted to rent one of my houses for their office. It turns out that it didn't have a sprinkler system, and it was going to be a problem putting a sprinkler system in, and they just didn't like the idea of exposed pipes around, so. But what that told me was that there's interest in that area for attorney's offices as well as other complementary businesses. And I do know that since Carl is planning to expand-
I'll make a motion that we allow him, three more minutes.
Without objection, you have three more minutes.
Thank you. If Carl goes ahead with their hundred-million-dollar donation for the College of Engineering to have a medical school here, that will need more office space, more housing space, in addition to other opportunities. So there are opportunities for office buildings as well as residences. So the, another possible person is retirees. They, there's a lot of people that like to live close to downtown after they retire. I had a man come by and put a note in my mailbox. He said, I, I live on Town and Country Apartments, but I really like this area. Do you have any room in your, do you have any apartments in your house? He said, I work in the chancellor's office. So U of I employees, retirees, Carl people, or downtown employees, courthouse people, as well as students, would all be interested in this area for housing. So it's an ideal area to do this. It's in a TIF district as well as an enterprise zone. I really don't want to sell any of my properties to an individual because I know what's going to happen. And it, they're breaking apart. I am demolishing four properties in that area. And another man is also demolishing three properties. So there's going to be seven vacant lots in this area. Now would be an ideal time to do something. And I just cannot support an individual development. Why can't Urbana have something that's really cool, really, wow, look at that? That's my feeling all along. We could do something, and this is an ideal location. Geologically, it has some issues, but they're all workable. Geographically, it's an ideal location. The number one employer in the county is just down the street. The number two is just a couple of blocks away, with two courthouses in the county, the fourth employer in the county. We have, it's a great location, a great opportunity. I would like to see us work with something, find some developer that we could really do something with, and really make something spectacular there. And now is the time we can do this while these houses are all either demolished. Two of them are down, four oh eight West Springfield and four twelve West Springfield are already down. Four oh two will be down as soon as the tenants move out in, on the eighteenth of next month. Four oh two and a half, four oh six West Springfield will be down as soon as the demolition contractor gets finished in Danville. Also, one oh four North McCullough will be down, and four oh five West Main will be down. In addition, four fifteen and four seventeen Main are already down. So there is a lot of vacant area there. And hopefully not just little individual apartments. I'd invite you to come by and see what's going on. I have a sinkhole behind four oh six West Springfield. It's about this big around, but it's almost three feet deep in a, in a cavern. I don't know where these are coming from, but I'm, I'm just tired of dealing with them. Put something there that's going to stay. Put something big that's going to have the footings down below the level of the Bowing Yard Creek. Something that's really going to enhance Urbana with sales tax, property tax increases, as well as a lot more people to downtown Urbana.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'd like to invite people to come by at your convenience and see what that area. Councilman Roberts, as well as Mayor Pressing have seen the area. And they would be happy to answer any questions as well as me, or so.
Are there any questions for Mr. Fausti?
Well, so if I understand what you were hoping to express here is that various properties are becoming available. There's been a lot of demolition on these properties. There are issues with the water table and the stability of the land. And is it then, my understanding is that what you would like to see is that the city help to co, to bring the property owners together to produce perhaps a joint venture to make a larger footprint building along Springfield, rather than to have construction on individual plots which formerly housed cottages along Springfield Avenue.
That's right, something.
And I think that the mayor had made a suggestion that me answer the question of whether the city council might be interested in seeing the property.
Yes, Mayor?
We talked, we walked along there and talked about having a trail right by the creek so that we-
That would be great.
We would need easements. And I suggested that when we act on these things, it would be a good idea for the council to actually go to the site. Because you just get a diff, you know, it's much better than looking at memos. And even hearing interesting people, it's, there's nothing like actually going to the site, so I think we should do that. We can't do it right, we can't act on it. We might be able to get the easements and everything, but I talked with Bill Gray about, we have other parts of the Bowing Yard that we have already scheduled to develop, and so this would have to come after that. But the planning should happen, the beginning of the planning should happen now.
Right, I would just like to make the council aware of what's going on there. Ideally, it would be nice to see a bicycle-sized pedestrian path that would come from this area close to downtown Urbana and make its way to campus. And then my wife, when she worked at the, on campus, she used to walk along the Bowing Yard Creek to work. She did that several times, so it's, it's a nice walk to go through there or a bike ride. So it would be ideal all the way around. So this is, could be a win-win-win situation for the community, for the bicyclists, for the pedestrians, so we could all have it, so.
And maybe we could use pavers.
Pardon me?
Maybe we could use pavers.
Wow.
No, that's just a joke.
Where could we get them?
That's just a joke.
Anyway, I'd like to see that maybe incorporate a park along with this, and to really enhance the whole area, so. Well, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Okay, Daryl Cruz. Oh, at the time, okay. Okay.
I have some public input.
Oh.
I'd like to announce that the, the pathway to the Building Trades Apprenticeship Information Fair, which will take place on July twenty-ninth from one to four thirty PM at the Douglas Library at five twelve East Grove Street. So all those who are listening, this is in particular trying to help increase diversity in the building trades. So July twenty-ninth, one thirty to four thirty, in partnership with State Representative Carol Ammons' office, the National Council of African-American Men, the AFL-CIO, East Central Illinois Building Trades, and the NAACP. Anyone who is listening in the audience, or anyone who is watching on television, who's interested in a career in the building trades, in particular African-Americans, minorities, please contact me at seven two one zero nine three four. Thank you.
And Charlie?
Could, is that something we could post on the city website?
Yes.
Yeah, we could at least get a little attention the next forty-eight hours for it then. I've, I've tried to start, and I would encourage council members to spread the word and send, blast it out to any of their, their lists. I've, I've shared it with a few people.
Yes, we have, we have posters up in the Lerman neighborhood on their opportunity board.
Thank you very much.
Okay, first up is ordinance number twenty fifteen dash zero seven dash zero eight one, an ordinance approving an agreement for use of right-of-way with McVilly Enterprises LLC, two fourteen West Main Street. Public Works, Bill Gray.
The ownership of this property had changed fairly recently, and with that knowledge, we realized that we needed to do a new license agreement that permits the canopy that occupies the public right-of-way and is supported within the public right-of-way. So I met with the owner, Mr. D. Yu, and discussed and gave him a copy of this. You have before you a signed agreement, license agreement for the continued use of this canopy on West Main Street. And we asked for recommendation for approval of the attached ordinance to allow this to occur, continue to occur.
Charlie?
Let Diane go first.
Diane?
I was just going to move that we send ordinance number twenty fifteen dash zero seven dash zero eight one to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Dennis?
I'd actually talked to D. Yu about two years ago, when he first purchased the building. And I just wanted to point out that the building that he occupies was the actual original Knights of Pithias building. It's been called the Office and has had other names, V. Picasso and others. The, the commemorative calendar cover, which we produced several years ago in two thousand and eight, features a street, a picture of downtown Urbana and a shot down Main Street shows the Flatiron Building. But on the right-hand side of the, of the picture, you can see that, that, that building originally did have an awning on it. And it was, the Knights of Pithias met above, and the offices down below were Mrs. Louise McWilliams' hat shop. She was a famous haberdasher who lived on Main Street and had her shop downtown for quite a few number of years and was regionally known. So I would have thought that perhaps we might have a conversation about perhaps reducing the size of the canopy in some way to reveal more of the building, because this building was actually the Royer-designed Knights of Pithias building. We actually made a mistake in the, in the brochure of the Royer district because the Knights of Pithias during the thirties or forties moved their building. They traded the buildings, they moved next door, and they have their sign up today above the, the Thai restaurant. But this is a historic building, and we hope in the future to put a Royer plaque on it. But if he's going to keep the awning as it is and use it as an outdoor cafe, I'm not going to object to it, even though I've never exactly liked how large it is. It kind of hides the building in an unfortunate way, but nobody was reviewing that idea or that, that concept when it was first originated. And it can be removed in the future. Perhaps there'll be a day that the restoration of the building will take place.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
I guess I need to seek advice of council on this one, given that the tenant is a liquor license holder. Is this something I need to recuse myself from?
That's a close one.
Out of an abundance of caution, I shall recuse myself. How's that?
I'll say. That's, okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, next is resolution number twenty fifteen dash zero seven dash zero three eight R, a resolution authorizing the execution of an option for the Housing Authority of Champaign County to lease or purchase the former Urbana Town Home site. Community Development, Libby Tyler.
And this item is actually a short-term option. It's being presented to you this evening in order to meet a critical funding deadline for grant funding for the project we've talked about on several occasions, which is the redevelopment of the former Urbana Town Home site. And also part of a larger project that will involve rehabilitation of the Aspen Court Development. The short-term option would be the Housing Authority of Champaign County. Mr. Ed Bland is here this evening. The terms of the actual lease and/or purchase would still need to be negotiated. We've included several of the items that we would expect to see there. But in negotiating that lease, we'll be able to take a closer look at the value of the property and the city's role. And in terms of the actual project update, we, the developer, Herman and Kittle, is working on updated plans, concepts and plans for the project. Working very hard and diligently on updating those as well as submitting these applications for the funding to even allow the project to proceed. Because this deals with real estate, we do need to have a public hearing, and that's been scheduled for next week for the city council meeting. And the other thing I would mention is we caught an incorrect address. It had west rather than east. So Matt has corrected that and handed those out with that change highlighted. Any questions?
Yeah, I have two. There's the mention of the, that address and you referred to sewer stuff, is that?
That, that is something that our attorney asked to be included because it appears that there's need to preserve a, an easement for storm drain for the Cove, which is a property to the west. So that's, that's something we want to allow them to be able to, to do, and that's not a problem from the Housing Authority's perspective to allow for that easement.
And then the other thing here is, you know, this is short-term. Would a lease or purchase come back to council for final approval then?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Aaron?
Yes. So I looked under the, as I looked at this, I see goals that are set. Looks like about four, up to nine goals. But in particular, one of them, goal four says, work with the Housing Authority of Champaign County to improve conditions for residents of public housing. The activity is to encourage the Housing Authority of Champaign County to increase the earning potential of extremely low-income households. And I'm interested in knowing how that goal would be met. Because I, I'm just interested in seeing how that would be met.
Sure. Yeah, and that, that might maybe only partially met. This is from the consolidated plan. I don't, Mr. Bland, do you have thoughts on how this project might help with the earning potential of extremely low-income households? You know, I think providing the housing is, is something that's assisting, but.
Good evening, council. If you probably remember, in twenty-ten, the Housing Authority of Champaign County was one of thirty-nine Housing Authority Came and Moving to Work agency. So the goal of the Housing Authority is we're working with existing families to make them self-sufficient. And, and make them self-sufficient, we worked with them to set goals, education goals, working goals. And we've been doing that now for roughly four or five years. And we've seen since we've been working with these families, their income has went up. We have a agreement with the University of Illinois that monitored the process and to measure the progress of our tenants against what they call a, another group, the Bloomington Housing Authority, the Cato Housing Authorities. So that has been very positive, and we see great outcome from that. This model of moving to work is something that the government, HUD is looking at, not only in Champaign, but on a national level. So to, I guess to answer your question, we feel we are able to help our families that participate in the program to become self-sufficient.
And I don't recall seeing this in here, but Libby, you could answer this maybe. But so Herman and Kittle gets the, the contract to do this development, right? And so I've been trying to tie these things together. We're talking about employment opportunities. Are there ways for us to tie employment opportunities to the development process of these? There's demolition and redevelopment, all these different types of things. How, is it possible for us to tie any of this together?
Been through the procurement of the developer. Been through the procurement of the developer through our process, and we've completed our intergovernmental agreement to start that process with the Housing Authority. I think moving ahead, we'll be seeing more of the developer and hearing more about their construction plans, and I think those are the excellent questions to ask when they give an update to us in about a month's time.
And so I'm definitely interested in asking those questions at those later times, but usually if I ask questions later, then the ground floor stuff is what I'm talking about, where we may have more input as a council or ability to set goals in a project. They are baseline goals from the very beginning, and that they are part of the entire agreement. So if Herman and Kittle or whoever, I'm sure we had to put this out for RFP or something like that, right? So as a part of our RFP, we're asking for a particular, I know we're getting into this procurement stuff probably, right? We talked about...
We completed, I'm sorry, we completed the procurement for the developer. It's been about a year ago. It's likely that we'll have further agreements with the developers. They seek local funding, so I do think that there will be opportunities to learn more about their approach to the construction. And I know that we had some questions of them in the interview as well. So I would just encourage you to engage the developer when they're here, and we'll certainly talk with them as well, so.
Okay, I think I have one other thing in here. I'm trying to make sure. Go ahead, if I find it, I'll come back.
Dennis?
So Libby, maybe I've entered like slight confusion. My, I thought that Herman Kittle was not only the developer, but it's going to be the owner. So this now, how does the Housing Authority's right to purchase and lease play into the ownership by Herman and Kittle?
That will be, and Mr. Bland may explain it better than I could, but the way to make this financially feasible is to be able to access public housing funds as well, and the Housing Authority would need an interest in the project. In order to do that, their interest would be in the land ownership or from a long-term lease with the city of Urbana. And then the actual improvements would be the developer's interest. And do you have any better elaboration at this?
Yes, well, Libby kind of said it, but to make this project work, the Housing Authority is going to be putting a significant amount of cash into this development to make it work. So because of that, the Housing Authority also has to have some ownership in this, because we will be putting quite a bit of money into this to make it work.
Well, I truly welcome the Housing Authority being a participant. Does that mean that there's going to be co-owners of the land? I guess that's my question. I thought Herman and Kittle was purchasing the property and developing it.
For Aspen Court, they will, I think they'll own that portion. So they have a contract to purchase that portion of the redevelopment. For this portion, it does need that major investment from the Housing Authority. No different from the Crystal View Town Homes, the Housing Authority owns that land, and there's a long-term, like a 99-year lease that Brin Shore Development has on that. And so in this case, we've actually got three players, although Homestead is also a part of the Crystal View Town Homes. And, you know, it may be that the city continues to hold the ground lease because that's a way for us to recapture some interest in the property, but that would be for this very long, and we have the next several months to negotiate this, that would be for that very long-term lease to the Housing Authority. And the Housing Authority would have an agreement with the developer.
And the developer is on board with this direction?
Yes.
Because they want to make it work financially?
Yes, because over the years for this project, the work the Housing Authority is going to put in roughly over, when you do the finance over the number of years, 40, 50 years, Housing Authority is putting almost $60 million into this project.
Well, I kind of rather like your participation, because I think it secures for the low-income housing that the people in the residence area who live in that area actually do need. And it sounds to me like the housing will not be, the cost of renting or leasing, the individual apartments will remain affordable.
Yes, in order to make this work, the Housing Authority will be layering some subsidy to the units, so the rent will be affordable for the families that you want to serve, similar to most of the communities.
Just a further response, we've been guided, our team has been guided in the structure of this development, development structure and ownership structure by Cindy Herrera, who works closely with the Housing Authority and structures these forms of agreements throughout the country and an expert. And this approach is a very common kind of approach, and I think that's also why the developer is very comfortable with it.
Diane?
Just to clarify, the $60 million from the Housing Authority, is that mostly in the form of rent subsidies over the years, not construction costs?
We're putting some initial money up front for construction as well as rent subsidy over the years.
How much of the construction?
Close to $3 million plus.
Charlie?
Yeah, and to extend what Aaron was talking about earlier, given that this is already in process beyond the RFP stage, there are federal, state, local monies being involved. I don't know what the proportions of the different monies are, but sometimes those come with requirements for minority contracting and so on, and I think that's something we'd like to hear more about from Herman Kittle and so on, and what opportunities there might be. I think where Aaron is going is something I think we can support, which is the opportunities that may present themselves in conjunction with apprenticeship programs and so on in the coming years.
At the interview, they did bring their construction manager and talked about it some in the interview, and I think that, you know, that gentleman might be able to help us as well. I do think we had to follow these guidelines in the Crystal View Town Homes construction, and that developer did an excellent job in engaging local contractors and making sure we had a very diverse workforce in the construction of that project. So I think we have a good track record on that project and would want to do at least as much here.
Okay, Mike?
So I just have one question. So on page three of the memo, under the proposed option agreement, it talks about in B, "The lease shall permit HACC to sublease to an ownership entity to be formed, of which HACC or a related entity of HACC shall have an ownership interest." What is that language intended to address?
It's a good legalese, and I think that's where Herman Kittle is referenced. It's how I would read that.
Okay, so in other words, that would reference, that would be the mechanism whereby HACC and Herman Kittle could form an ownership, a partnership, or some kind of other ownership arrangement?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
Move to send this to council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second. Moved by Smythe and seconded by Roberts. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next up is resolution number 2015-07-034R, a resolution authorizing entering into and execution of a Link Up Illinois Double Value Coupon Program Grant Agreement. Community Development, Libby.
Okay, this has been a very popular program we've been able to offer since 2010. I think there was one year when we didn't receive the grant, and we're really fortunate that we received the grant again this year. What it does is we receive grant funds from a nonprofit known as Link Up Illinois, and they allow us to double the value of link purchases at the farmer's market. So, you know, twice as much healthy foods can be obtained with the same amount of link value. And this is, this agreement would allow us to ratify the grant. We've actually already started offering the double value, because the market season's short. We've done it three times in the past. It's been successful, and so coming here tonight to do that ratification step. And the budget amendment is actually grouped in the group of budget amendments that Elizabeth has for you later in the agenda.
Charlie?
It's a no-brainer for me, so I move to send this to council with a recommendation for approval.
Say a second.
Second.
Okay, moved by Smythe and selected by Marlin.
And I have a quick question.
And Diane?
In the past, the amount has doubled up to $40. So you could spend 20 and double up to 40. Is that still the limit, or do you know?
Might be in the fine print here. I'd find out from Natalie and let you know next time.
Okay, next week it's fine, great.
Aaron?
Do we have, first of all, I really appreciate it's a no-brainer for me, too. Certainly would help promote this in any way possible. Do we have brochures? Do we have any other ways to advertise stuff?
There is a giant banner that they put up. I went to the market this last Saturday, and there's a lot of activity, and so I think it's well-promoted. Our market is very heavily advertised, and this aspect is part of that advertising, and they are, they're moving, you know, the double, I mean, there is activity. People are excited, they're using the double value. It's, you can't miss this huge sign, and we have thousands of people who come to the market, so.
Well, I definitely, I just want to do whatever else I can to help make sure that, in particular, in the areas that my constituency are, Cunningham One and places like that, and even in East Urbana, where, I mean, I would love to take them and go door-to-door. I want to make sure that people have access to the good, healthy foods, locally grown and stuff like that. So any actual material, a banner is nice, but that's at the market. I'm saying that I can take with me, and I can take out to other places and promote and things like that. That's what I'm looking for.
I think that would be wonderful. I'm sure Natalie has some information she can, that's a little easier to tote around than a big banner.
All right, thanks.
Okay, Mike?
Normally, I'm sure we'd all be horribly offended that you all started doing this before you had our approval, but since locally grown tomatoes were out, and I had my first BLT of the year, real BLT, I'm all for it.
Dennis?
And on that topic, in a kind of a tangential way, I'd like to say that the Lyman Garden at Washington and Lyman Avenue has been holding a free distribution of local-grown vegetables on the plot, right there at the garden. Every Tuesday morning at 10:30, for those people who need to supplement their daily diets, but find that it's difficult to afford, we pass out baskets or bags of fresh produce that was picked only days and sometimes hours before the distribution.
Okay, thanks. So there's a motion to send that to council with a recommendation for approval. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next is resolution number 2014-07-035R, a resolution approving an economic incentive agreement with the East Urbana Development Corporation. Libby Tyler.
This agreement is to allow for the continuation of a tax rebate program that we've had in the Berenger Commons subdivision in northeast Urbana for many years. And as a result of some recent inquiries in our finance department, we took a look at the underlying agreement, which actually dates back to 1991, and lo and behold, that underlying agreement for the program which started in 2001 has gone and expired on us, and we have folks who have been in the program for the seven-year tax rebate of the difference between their tax, property tax in the city versus what they would be in the county are looking for their rebates this time of year. So we worked as an interdepartmental effort quickly to find a way to address this. It was a joint effort of finance, legal, and community development to craft a substitute agreement. It's not possible under the statute to go back and extend an annexation agreement beyond the 20 years, and we did not want to recommend ceasing the program since we felt it would be really unfair to those folks in the program and that this is how the subdivision has been marketed. Clearly, every expectation that this rebate program would continue and has, it has done a very good job in helping to continue the build-out of this really important part of Urbana. So we wanted to be fair and to recognize the spirit and the intent of this previous agreement. So the substitute agreement includes those folks who are currently receiving the rebates but are not yet to their seven years. There's a list of 32 of those attached to the agreement. It also includes 73 undeveloped lots that are still held by the developer, and this is, again, a key part of marketing those lots and getting this subdivision built out and then in turn continuing its benefit to the city as a whole and to northeast Urbana and the commercial areas in particular. We worked with the developer, Ivan Richardson. He's fully in support. He's already signed the agreement. He's very thankful to the city for finding a way to continue the program or to recommend continuation of the program. We sent letters to the homeowners of the other 32 who are in the system, just to let them know that this was the case and that, you know, pending city council approval of the agreement, that we would be able to process their, this year's rebate payments in August, you know, before, prior to mid-August. There are a handful of properties, by my count, seven, that are not covered by the agreement, and that is because they're not already in the system and they're not held by the East Urbana Development Corporation. And the legal department did not feel that there would be a good way to include them in the agreement because of the, their stake would not be clear. However, we can address those properties at a later time simply by resolution. We thought it was logical to start with the larger agreement first and to answer any questions on that. I think, I think those are the main points. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Libby? Dennis?
So what's the activity and what's the building out of Berengen Commons, say, in the last four or five years? How many houses, new houses starts have happened using this process? And what success have we seen recently?
It's about two-thirds built out, and it's been steady, you know, the last, up until this year and last year, we kind of went through a stagnant period, and that's why I think you'll count about a dozen of the houses currently in the program are actually owned by the developer, built the homes, has not been able to sell them for a price that would break even. The good news is that the pace of sales has really increased throughout our area and in Urbana in particular. I think you've seen those reports, you know, in our periodic economic development updates and from the Champaign County Association of Realtors. And the other good news is that the values are increasing, so that makes these properties will, should now be able to move. So I think it's steady, and I think that if we're able to continue this program, it will accelerate. And the other point I should have mentioned is in just another, you know, within two years, we hope to have a new enterprise zone, and for those folks in Berenger Commons wishing to build at that point, that would actually be a more beneficial program for them and would allow us to close out this rebate program.
So we're hoping that this is an interim offer?
Exactly. It's like a stopgap, and that was an important point, so.
Charlie?
That brings up my question, which is the length of this agreement. The enterprise zone, enterprise zone stuff is, those are usually 10-year agreements, right, for enterprise zone?
It can be renewed. So I think with the enterprise zone term and then anticipated extensions, like we, we are, the current enterprise zone we have now was adopted in the '80s.
Oh.
So... So, you know, surely with this, these types of programs, we can get that subdivision built out.
Okay. So, but regardless, what is the length? I didn't see an actual length to this agreement. Is it indefinite?
The agreement ceases when the enterprise zone comes into effect, so it's a stopgap. And then, basically, it would cease when these properties that are covered request and receive their seven years.
Mike?
So, first of all, I just want to say thank you to Libby and your staff and legal and whoever else was involved. I know Ivan is very appreciative of all the work and the city's willingness to, to extend the original agreement, since so much of the subdivision remains undeveloped. I just, I have a couple of technical questions, though. So, enterprise zone, other than having to deal with the sales tax on the construction materials, what else will the enterprise zone afford homeowners or actually, more importantly, home buyers, like second home buyers? How does the enterprise zone complement or differ from this interim arrangement?
Well, this interim arrangement really replicates the one that was there before in large measure. So it does allow for the transfer from developer to first home buyer, second home buyer, you know, however many until the seven years is up. The amount of the tax rebate is just that portion of the difference between the unincorporated and the city rate. The enterprise zone will be to the first homeowner. It'll be for a shorter period of time. It will be a deeper tax incentive. It involves other taxing bodies, so it takes a higher portion of rebate from the tax bill. And you'll remember, in our enterprise zone presentations, we had this five-year step. So you had this infusion the first year, and then it steps down. So the five-year rebate is the equivalent of a three-year rebate, and we had almost a hundred percent participation from taxing bodies. So that is a very, very deep incentive. That is, you know, as we presented previously, the portions of the enterprise zone that include these incomplete subdivisions and ones that we're anticipating, including the northeast portion of Berenger Commons, is really going to be a big shot in the arm for these areas. That's, that's one of the reasons why we took that unusual approach in our application.
Okay, so, for the purposes of discussion, maybe in round numbers, $350,000 home, which gets enterprise zone tax break, could possibly be around $30,000 off of the, the cost of the home. Is that about right?
Could be.
Is it state and local? We're looking at state and local, right?
Pardon me?
State and local ta, sales tax?
Well, the sales tax is a different matter altogether. That's on the building materials.
Right.
So that helps right there with the construction, but the really impressive part of the enterprise zone would be the tax rebates to the taxpayer, the homeowners, what the intent is there.
Which tax?
And that would be, you know, in your round numbers, you know, pardon me?
Which tax? The property tax?
The entire property tax. So in your round number example, you know, property taxes are pushing up against that, you know, ten percent. So, you know, what, so it's a third of what you, so it'd be like 10,000. We didn't get everybody on board, so, you know, gosh, it could be like, you know, maybe an $8,000 a year where these would be, you know, this is probably closer to 800 for seven years versus 8,000 for three. Super-duper round numbers.
Okay. No, I get it. I appreciate you walking me through that. Thank you.
Diane?
Just, just so I understand, in terms of when this switches from the, this incentive to the enterprise zone, is, is Mr. Richardson, who's built some homes that haven't been sold, is he considered the first owner? I'm just curious when the clock starts ticking. Is, or is it the first home buyer from the developer?
The way, in practice, this has been applied is it's the first entity that asks, that requests the rebate. That's when the clock starts, whether it's the developer or whether it's the first buyer, second buyer, if the first buyer didn't wake up. And I think what Ivan Richardson's explained to us is, for the most part, that was really just for the home buyers. He did not use a provision that allowed him to get the rebates holding vacant land. He's only asked for the rebates where he's had the built property.
So he is using the rebate on the built homes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? I don't think we have a motion yet. Is it, someone like to make, oh, Libby?
Sorry, inappropriate, but Mike mentioned the staff, and I did want to credit Kurt Borman, who actually drafted the agreement, so.
I have a question.
Erin?
So, the rebate, is this, it's a twenty, my first question was like, I think you sort of spoke to it. Why did it take over twenty years to, to actually finish this project? It's still not done after twenty years?
Can I answer that?
Liquor license, or is it?
We don't have enough people who want to build homes in Urbana right now. I mean, and it, and it's not just an Urbana problem. I mean, it's, we all know what's going on in the economy, but it's a, it's a bit of a higher-end subdivision, and, you know, the economy's not been that great for the last, you know, ten years of the, twenty years of the subdivision.
So the rebate itself, it's intended for home buyers, and so, but you're saying Ivan is using it for empty homes that are, that have been built?
Those homes are being rented.
Oh, they are being rented?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And, but he owns them, so he's using the rebates?
Yes.
Okay.
Charlie?
Yeah, actually, I was, I was around in 1991 when we approved this. We had, we had a great deal of optimism that this would be a upscale development for Urbana, and it did pretty well for many years, and then the recession hit, and it, you know, hopefully the enterprise zone will, will give it the jumpstart it needs. There's some, some nice lots left, and I bicycle through there, as Mike knows, on a regular basis, and there's some idea for geese I need to share with you. So, I'd make a motion to send this council the recommendation for approval.
Second.
Moved by Smythe, seconded by Madigan. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Makes me feel very old.
Next is Resolution Number 2015-07-036R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the County of Champaign for Animal Control Services, Urbana Police Department. Chief Connolly?
Good evening. The, hopefully the memo outlines everything. This is a, an ongoing contract with the Champaign County folks. The funding formula changed just a little bit, was a little bit more to our advantage this year because of the population base, so for the most part, legal and Joel Sanders from our office have been negotiating with the Champaign County folks on this, and everybody seems comfortable with it.
Any questions, or Charlie?
No, one question for you, chief. There's a mention of exotics and other animals that aren't handled. Where do birds fit in? And what happens with birds that are, that are, say, found in a home or whatever?
Well, I think there is a relationship with the University of Illinois Vet Med folks. We have had actually an event involving exotic birds, and there was an arrangement between our animal control officer, who was not Michelle Carr at the time, and the folks out at the, either at the Vet Med clinic or somewhere out at the university, where they made arrangements for that with a sanctuary. That gets very expensive.
Okay, okay, so, but we do have something for birds?
We do.
Okay, and what about the other exotics, like snakes and stuff like that?
I think the same holds true.
Same holds true.
Right.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I know that if they're, if they're legal, the Humane Society does adopt birds and snakes and turtles and iguanas. So sometimes they get transferred from the county control. Any other questions? Diane?
No, I would move Resolution Number 2015-07-036R to council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Marlin, seconded by Roberts. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next, we'll skip to item thirteen, Resolution Number 2015-07-039R, a resolution authorizing entering into an execution of Federal Emergency Management Agency Assistance to Firefighters Grant Agreement. Fire Department, Brian?
Okay, this is the grant that we were notified about earlier this month that I brought to the council, and this resolution is to accept the grant from the Department of Homeland Security. And in the memorandum, it was, it's in the amount of $20,645. And we have a ten percent match, which is available through our fire department training fund. We set aside funds annually to purchase equipment for training of firefighters, so we'll use those funds for our ten percent match. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Brian? Dennis?
I'll make a motion that we send Resolution 2015-07-039R, authorizing entering into the execution of Federal Emergency Management Agency Assistance to Firefighters Grant Agreement to council with recommendation approval.
Second.
Motion by Roberts, seconded by Ammons. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Now we go back to item number ten, An Ordinance Revising the Fiscal Year 2015-2016 Annual Budget for Various Items. Elizabeth Hannan?
So, this budget amendment includes the two grants that you discussed just now and a little bit earlier. There are also several other items in here, including rebudgeting unspent, unspent funds for relocation of the final resident of Barnes Mobile Home Park. And I am going to say, I will send you a corrected ordinance because, as Mr. Monson pointed out to me, it wasn't $25,030, it was $2,530. So we'll get that corrected. There's also a couple of other cleanup items. There's a correction on revenues in the vehicle and equipment replacement fund, where I picked up the expense side in the budget ordinance but missed the revenue side. And in the arms fund in the budget, we missed a small amount of money for an information technology intern. That's about $3,100. So, that's it.
Any questions for Elizabeth?
Yes. So, social service funds are used to buy a home? Is that what I'm, I don't, I don't quite understand it.
Charlie wants to explain.
I can explain that. Two years ago, we allocated a certain amount of social service funding to help relocation in Barnes, the Barnes Mobile Home Park. That was money that came back to social services this year. So, that was just a one-time thing, basically a year and a half ago, or almost, well, almost two years ago? How long ago was it, Mike? Mike, Mike actually knows the, Mike had, last year, I guess.
About a year and a half.
Year and a half, yeah. So that was the, that's why it's a social service line item, because that's where we got the money for the, for the relocation.
Okay.
Any other questions? Is there a motion? Dennis?
I'll make a motion. Ordinance Number 2017-07-082, An Ordinance Revising the Fiscal Year 2015-16 Annual Budget, Various Items. Do we move that to city council with approval?
Second.
Moved by Roberts, seconded by Ammons. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next is Resolution Number 2015-07-037R, a resolution to authorize execution of an amendment to contract for real estate purchase, city's purchase of Barnes Mobile Home Park property between City of Urbana and Weisiger Family Trust. Mike?
About a year ago, we started trying to relocate the nine households in Barnes Mobile Home Park, and on July sixth, we moved the last resident. So, we ended up spending about $27,000 assisting those families out of the $50,000 that was set aside. We spent money moving mobile homes, which tended to cost about $3,500 each to move them to a different park. We spent it on rental deposits, utility deposits, moving expenses, application fees. Our average cost was about $3,000 per household. Tended to be on the low side because four of the res, four of the households got Section Eight vouchers, which are rental subsidies, and didn't require as much expense. So, our goal in doing this, I worked with Randy Brigette of Community Development, Randy did a great job, and our goal was to get residents either into better living situations or, or at worst, at least equal to what they had at Barnes. And I, I think we met that goal. Here at the end, we did run into one little problem. The, the original sales contract called for the seller, the Weisiger Family Trust, to provide the city a cleared site by June 30th, or else the contract became null and void. The last tenant was moved on July sixth, and the site is now almost, almost but not quite cleared. So the ordinance you had before you would authorize extending the deadline for the Weisiger Family Trust to provide a clear site to October 15th. The sales price would remain what it was, $113,000. We expect the site to be cleared any day now, and the closing on the property could take place in August. There is money in the budget for the purchase. I passed around an ordinance at your desk. It's because in your council packet, this was presented as a resolution, and was later discovered that it really should be in the form of an ordinance, but there's no substantive change, it's just an ordinance. Other than that, that's it, unless there's any questions.
Any questions? Dennis?
No questions, actually, but thanks so much. This was a wonderful job that you took care of, a rather difficult situation where we had mobile home court being purchased potentially by the city, assisting the, the residents to move and dealing with all the various issues that came up on an individual basis with these families, successfully accomplished within just a few days of the goal. It's a totally excellent job. I owe you dinner.
Thank you.
And I'm going to do that for you.
Okay.
And so therefore, I would like to move Resolution 2015-07-037R.
Is this a resolution or ordinance?
Oh, yeah, it's an ordinance now, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that right. Same number, however, is that correct? Without, without an R on the end?
The clerk's office will give it a number.
Okay, it's going to be a renumbered ordinance, which is to authorize an execution of an amendment to contract for real estate purchase, Barnes Mobile Home Park property between the City of Urbana and the Weisiger Family Trust. I send this to council with approval.
And moved by Roberts, seconded by Smythe. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Finally, we have Ordinance Number 2015-01-006, An Ordinance to amend Urbana City Code, Chapter 19, Article 3, Division 1, Section 1922A, Concerning Qualifications for Service on City of Urbana Civilian Police Review Board. Civilian Police Review Board qualifications. Mayor Presson?
We, we talked about this before, and we had a couple of people who were on the board that didn't like the idea of someone who didn't actually still live in Urbana. But what I'd like to do is get the former vice chair, Grace Mitchell, back on the civilian review board. I think she did an excellent job, and the two people that came to the council, I think they've written you emails that they think that she should be back on there. So she has a long history. She lived in Urbana, and she was a counselor at Urbana High School for many years. I think she's a woman of excellent judgment, and so... And so I did talk with some of you about this. And Bill Brown suggested that we have a limit of only one non-resident. So I put that in there. You should have the revised copy of it. So basically, what we're doing is changing it to say, "Members of the CPRB shall reside, or shall have resided, in the City of Urbana, and shall possess a reputation for fairness, integrity, and a sense of public service. Notwithstanding the immediate foregoing, only one non-resident of the City of Urbana may be appointed to and serve on the CPRB at any given time."
Any questions for Mayor Presson? We do have one public input for this. Diane?
Well, maybe we should have public input before this.
Okay. Daryl, do you want to talk now? Daryl Cruz? Thank you for waiting.
Yeah, thank you, and good evening. Earlier this evening, you talked about an item called the public, a public resource that you needed to protect. And that was pavers. I would suggest that you even have a greater public resource to protect, and that your citizens who are residents to be enabled to serve on city commissions and councils. Because this is a representative government, and the citizens of Urbana should have every opportunity to serve their city and their government. And those opportunities should not be gradually eroded or diminished over time. And if we protect pavers, I hope we can protect citizens' ability to serve in these capacities. There are several points here. This issue is not about Grace Mitchell. Grace Mitchell, we all know, as a person we respect, as an individual and a public servant. She was enabled to be on the CPRB because she was a resident of Urbana to begin with. When the CPRB was, ordinance was written, it was written with a stipulation that it had Urbana residents only. Most of you approve that. And the value of including that language in that ordinance is because you recognize that citizens from Urbana should be those that serve on this particular board to deal with complaints that may come before them regarding the Urbana Police Department. Just assume for a second that you had this ordinance written the way it was, and a person outside of Urbana filled one of the seats, and Grace Mitchell was living in Urbana and was precluded from offering her service. We're assuming there are no other Grace Mitchells in Urbana. And I think that's a false assumption. I think that's inappropriate. It's not Grace Mitchell that's the issue. The issue is whether you believe that there are people equally capable as Grace Mitchell in Urbana who can serve on this board. And you did that eight years ago. Why would you assume that there aren't people now? Many times when people serve on boards and commissions of a city, and they do not reside in that city, over time, there's a tendency for them to lose the commitment or interest, regardless of how well their intentions were to begin with. Now, we use an example of the IDOT Traffic Stop Task Force. I just looked at it. The Urbana residents serving on that task force, ninety-one percent of the time, they attended the meetings. Non-Urbana residents, it's been sixty-one percent of the time, they've attended the meetings during the year. That says something about commitment. It says something about ongoing interest in the community. And it says something about you recognizing that there are citizens in Urbana who are willing and wanting to serve on these boards and commissions. Thank Grace Mitchell. Pat her on the back, she is moved. That is a loss to Urbana. But it isn't a crisis of, of, to the city that we can't find another capable person to do this who lives in the city. That person will live here, have contact with the people in the neighborhood, will be abreast of the problems and issues relative to the CPRB at a level that I believe will be a degree or two higher than somebody who lives in Champaign. I would simply ask you, if you value a public resource, that your citizens are your greatest resource, and you should not be giving away the opportunities as city council members for citizens of Urbana to serve on Urbana commissions and boards. You have done that before. This is no place, is my opinion, to be, again, to continue doing that. I have talked to a number of people. When I share it with them, they say, "Why would we do that?" We're a community that's quite capable in most cases. The argument that this particular board might require some special expertise or skill, I think if you look at the original people that were nominated and selected for it, were not selected for special skill and expertise that they possessed, but because of special qualities that they would bring in terms of judgment. And so that quality is certainly available. And it's time to let Grace move and put another Urbana resident here. I hope you consider your citizens as valuable a resource as you do pavers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So are there any questions? Aaron?
I absolutely agree that, as much as I love Ms. Grace Mitchell and know their family and all that type of stuff, I absolutely agree that the residents of Urbana should serve on the commissions and committees in the City of Urbana. And I'm actually concerned that this trend started with the, from my knowledge, it started with this IDOT Traffic Commission to reach outside of Urbana to bring, basically handpicked individuals from the City of Champaign to serve on the IDOT Task Force. And as Daryl has pointed out, the attendance, ninety-one percent for the Urbana residents, sixty-one percent for the Champaign residents. And I think that's very important for us, because these issues are extremely important. These are issues certainly into my constituents, who are very much concerned about what the report will say or the analysis will be on the Traffic Commission. And then, of course, the CPRB, which is yet another issue that CU Citizens for Peace and Justice brought forth many years ago to bring forth a CPRB. And now the two most, I guess, kind of controversial committees are the ones that we want to change the rules for. So I do not support this, this move or this idea by the mayor. I will be voting against it. I do think that our residents in Urbana are quite capable of serving the, our commissions. So that's my two cents.
Mayor Presson?
Well, first of all, I would like to say that this was my initiative to establish a civilian review board for the police. And we went through, we had a task force set up that studied it for a year. And then we put the ordinance together. And certainly, we do have precedence for some boards and commissions to have people who are not from Urbana. We had the former drama teacher from Urbana High School to serve on the Public Arts Commission, and I think he did a good job. Most of our employees don't live in Urbana, but, you know, they still do a good job. But I think that the people are, are chosen for this based on their ability. And we're just talking about one person, limiting it to one person, who has a deep connection with Urbana. And I think that her experience matters on this. And the fact that her fellow board members would really appreciate to see her on there. And she's still very interested in, in getting back on. So that's the reason I, I have presented this to you. So I would appreciate your support on it.
Aaron?
I do believe for the public record, we should be very clear that while, Mayor, you may have put forth that task force, the initiative to bring forth a citizens or civilian police review board is something that we worked on for a long time, and members of CU Citizens for Peace and Justice put forth in many different forums. And I believe it was part of the support that you got to become mayor, so that you would put forth these types of initiatives. So that's why it's probably particularly disturbing that you would ask for people outside of the city to, to serve on the CPRB, when there are members here who are quite capable. And this would be consistent with a trend of you choosing individuals or looking over individuals who are quite qualified to serve on some of these particular boards, like Mr. Cruz, who you would not have put on the IDOT Traffic Task Force. So I'm very concerned about that. I don't know about the drama teacher. I know about now. I know that we have tried to get people with felony convictions to serve on these boards. You made promises that we would get that, and we didn't get that either. So I'm opposed to this. I will remain opposed to it. I think that we should have individuals from the City of Urbana, just like we all have to live in Urbana, to be on, on the, the council. The individuals on the commissions should be in Urbana as well. And I think the information that was brought forth about the IDOT, about the level of attendance and the particular detail to this, is something that we should pay attention to. So I will be voting no.
Well, Aaron, I would like to point out that I was working on that before I became mayor. And probably before you started working on it, there was a, a committee that I was on. And the only city council member that would come and talk to us was Danielle Chinowith. So I worked on that for many years before I became mayor. So just, let's get that straight. And in terms of getting rid of convictions, I have worked to help people get their convictions expunged. Very little gratitude from those people.
Dennis?
Maybe I'd like to ask the city attorney. But in passing an ordinance that, that changes the, and changing the text of the ordinance with the intent of retaining a particular person, is this legislative manipulation? Is this something that the city council should really avoid being involved in? Or does this have nothing to do with that?
You're asking a question of policy. The way the ordinance is drafted as proposed, it's perfectly legal. It's not, one may interpret it as the Grace Mitchell ordinance, but the way it's drafted, it, it could be anybody that would be recommended by the mayor for appointment. It isn't one individual. So as drafted, it's a legal ordinance. There's nothing in the municipal code that prohibits the city from appointing or mayor recommending for appointment, and the council appointing somebody outside of the city to serve on its, on this particular board or commission.
Diane?
Well, this is a tough one. And I've gone back and forth on this. What bothered me the most about this particular proposal was that we were being asked to change, or write a policy that's very specific, really, for one individual. And I don't think that's generally a good idea. And so if we were going to allow a non-resident on the CPRB, I would, I would certainly strike the clause that said, "Have someone who has lived in the city." You know, if we're going to have non-residents, it doesn't matter if you lived in Urbana for ten years or two days or never. I mean, you're a non-resident. And, and as I've been thinking about this, one argument that you could make, well, it's support or voting for this would be to, to consider the fact that many non-residents have encounters with the Urbana police on a daily basis. If you look at the task force data, I think fifty percent of the traffic stops are non-residents. And so you could say, "Well, the non-resident member of the CPRB could sort of be the representative of all those non-residents who do have daily encounters with the Urbana Police Department." And that is how, if I were to vote for this, I would, I would justify my vote, not because of one particular individual, which I don't think is a good idea to make policy based on one particular person. So, so I still don't know how I'm going to vote on this. But that's, that's, I would certainly not want to include language that said you had to formerly lived in Urbana if you're going to have a non-resident on here.
Sure, Mayor Presson?
It's really not designed for one specific person. It's designed for the fact that there could be somebody who doesn't live, who would be very interested in it and be very qualified. And the reason that we said formerly lived is because I think having some connection to Urbana of living here and working here is a good thing. So, you know, just the very fact that you moved away shouldn't pre, preclude you from being on this commission if you are qualified otherwise. That was the idea. But it certainly, you know, there's a, a limit of only one person, so you're certainly not going to change the whole dynamic. But I think that if there is a case where there's somebody who's very good, that people agree is very good, that person shouldn't be precluded. So that was the idea.
Charlie?
I have a couple of thoughts here. There's a question I'd like to see answered, which is how many other boards and commissions have non-Urbana residents on them? I know there are different reasons for different commissions. So I'd sort of like to see that list, just.
There's only one now.
Only one commission?
Only one now, and that's the task force, the IDOT task force.
I thought we had some other boards and commissions where non, where you had to have somebody who lived in the county or something like that.
Well, we could, we could search it, but I know that there was one on the Public Arts Commission. I don't believe we have anybody on the Public Arts Commission now. But we do have people that apply from other places, and they ask if they can do it. But I'm not aware of anybody. We could check and let you know.
Yeah, anyway, so I'd, I'd like to have some time to look at all of the boards and commissions and understand some of the rationale and think about this. Also, the other thing is, we've been, I've noted that when we meet for more than three hours, we don't make good decisions. And we're past ten o'clock. One of the things I wanted to bring up, and this is a side note, was, you know, we should, we should change our limits. Rather than eleven o'clock, we should switch to ten-thirty, because in the past, it was seven-thirty was the start of our meetings, and, and we ended it at eleven. And now we start at seven, and we end at eleven. So we add another half an hour there. And I, I'd much prefer to see us start having a, a limit at, at three and a half hours, because I think after three hours, we don't make good decisions. And so I, I'd like to think about this. I know Diane wants to think about it some. I don't know how the others of you feel about this, but I'd like to keep this. I won't make the motion yet to, to let discussion keep going. But I'd like to see, I'd like to have some time to think about this, research it a little bit, and think about the issue of, you know, are there exceptional individuals? Are there talented individuals that should be part or brought in on occasion to any and all of our boards and commissions? And so I'm, I'm going to make a motion to keep this in committee after a little more discussion. But, but be cognizant of the hour and, and our own abilities to make good decisions after three hours.
Aaron?
I don't have to be up until five in the morning, so I'm, I'm going to really hang out till eleven. Anyway, the notion that we don't have residents or the premise that we don't have residents who live in Urbana, who could fulfill this seat and this, this opportunity or this duty, that's what we're saying, that we don't have sufficient numbers of people who can do this. There's nothing that I recall, and I went through the CPRB process, complaint process, all the way through. And there was nothing that I found about any of the individuals that said that they had a level of expertise in statistics or whatever. The, the, I mean, Chief Cobb probably was the person who had the most expertise as a person who came into the room and offered some advice about something. I guess some could argue that Tom Costello has some particular expertise in something. I don't know what that would be. But there's nothing, I mean, But, there's nothing, I mean, I love Ms. Mitchell. I think she's a great person. But there's nothing exceptional about what she brought to the, that, to the board or commission that others didn't bring as way of expertise. And so, I mean, when we argue that point, there is no one who has, outside of, maybe even within the police department, who has studied the IDOT Traffic Stop data through and through for years, more than Daryl Cruz. And this body, before I came, refused to appoint him, or the mayor refused to appoint him. So now, we're gonna argue that this person has a level of, or somebody out there has a level of expertise that should be brought to the table? They can serve in the same capacity that Mr. Cruz has been forced to serve the task force by coming to the meetings and sitting in that seat and offering his input, or her input in that regard, if they are that serious about serving. So I don't think that this is, we can camouflage it in some way, that it is for any experts from later on, but it's really about Grace Mitchell, and it shouldn't be about Grace Mitchell. It should be about the residents in the City of Urbana.
Charlie?
I would also point out that we vote on all of the individuals. As a council, we vote on all of the individuals to get appointed. So, you know, ultimately, it comes to us to say yea or nay, regardless of whether they're resident or not. So we still have that level of control as a council. But again, I'd still like to think about this from a more global view of considering all of our boards and commissions before I, before I'm ready to make a vote. So I'd move to keep this in committee while we do some research.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, moved by Smythe, seconded by Marlin, to keep this in committee. Did you want to come back on a specific date, or just in general, keep it in committee?
I'll work with Mike to get this done within the next one or two committee meetings.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries. Seeing no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.